Good evening. Welcome to the City of Half Moon Bay Planning Commission Meeting of April 9, 2024.
Good evening again. Just a brief etiquette during the meeting. We are broadcasting this live on Channel 27 and on the PCT's website. We do have Spanish interpretation, and we are allowing public comment for general items that are not listed on the agenda as well as on the agenda. Those will be given a time, and that can be determined by the Chair. We did have some public comment come in this afternoon, and it has been published on the website, as well as it was emailed to the Commissioners. I think that sums it up.
Thank you. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Yeah, let me just do roll call, and I'll be right over.
Okay, and so we could start with roll call.
Commissioner Reddick and Commissioner Gordon are absent this evening. Commissioner Johannes?
I'm here.
Commissioner Hernandez?
I am present.
And Chair Gossett?
Here.
All three are present.
And at this point, I'll invite anyone from the public to speak out about anything that is not on the agenda.
I need to make a statement. It's just that I submitted comments in my personal capacity at the last meeting, because I wanted to attend, but I was unable, because the place where I was at didn't have ADA access for the public. So I participated as a public member, and I've not made up my mind about the project, and we'll proceed to hear the evidence presented to the Commission with an open mind.
Thank you for that. Anyone else that would wish to speak on anything that's not on the agenda? Okay, with that, I will close the public comment section, and we will move on to Item 1A, which is a continuation of our meeting from March 26 to a date certain. And the project description is the coastal development permit for the Caltrans state Route 1 multi-asset roadway rehabilitation project. And I believe Doug will be giving a presentation along with Caltrans as soon as they have access to the technology.
Ready? Okay. For the record, I'm Doug Garrison. I'm the project planner for this one, for the Caltrans multi-asset maintenance project. So a little bit of background. This project was here at the last meeting, March 26. At that time, there were a lot of questions, some of them pretty technical in nature. So the Planning Commission continued that hearing to a date certain until tonight. And so we've got a fair amount of new information from Caltrans, and I apologize, we didn't get it to the Commission a little bit sooner, but we were working out details right up through Friday on this. And one other piece of information, as we discussed before, part of this project is in San Mateo County jurisdiction, part of it's in the city jurisdiction. The county did approve their coastal development permit, which was then, right after our last meeting, it was appealed to the Coastal Commission on April 2 for largely the same reasons that came up here concerning the stretch of the highway between Surfers Beach and Sam's Chowder House and what's been historically used as informal coastal parking there. There was one question about where the jurisdiction line was, and I was surprised to find out it's in the center of the highway right there, because most of our maps show it on the west side of the right of way. We got this from LAFCO, from County Recorder's Office, and it does show the center line for the city section is in the center of the highway for that short little stretch. If you go a little bit south, a little bit north, it's all county jurisdiction on both sides. So some of the issues that came up last time, people were trying to figure out where the road was going to be widened, how much. We had some questions about construction noise and light. I'd raised the question of sort of balancing quality of life issues that it would probably make sense for some night construction to avoid peak traffic periods when they're going to have to close down at least half of the highway for a period of time. And there were some questions as to, sort of in layman's terms, what is 66 decibels, that sort of thing, and Caltrans has provided some of that. There were a lot of comments about Kelly Avenue and Highway 1 intersection, potential improvements. Some of these, Caltrans does have a presentation for tonight, and I'm not going to explain or attempt to explain a lot of the more technical details of what they're proposing. I think they can do that better. There were questions about other intersections, Poplar, Redondo Beach Road. At this point, I think the answer is still they're not within the scope of work for this project. Maz, our Public Works Director, does have some information to provide about city initiative to start looking at that stretch of the highway. Other question was stormwater runoff, partly with the road widening. Is that enough to, with the new impervious surface, would that change drainage? Replacing the three culverts on the southern end of town, down by Grove, would that have adverse effects? And Caltrans has submitted more information on that. They'll get into a little more detail. I think sort of the bicycle lanes up by Surfers Beach and Sam's Chowder House, in some ways, that's sort of the most difficult question. The other ones are engineering questions, and there are engineering answers. This one, I really think Coastal Commission has to answer those questions. Are parking spaces that Caltrans considers a safety hazard and illegal, are they actually legitimate coastal access spaces that have to be replaced? I think we will get some guidance from the Coastal Commission as they get into the county appeal. And we're also looking at maybe some alternatives that could help us move forward. So at this point, I think Maz is going to step in with his presentation. Caltrans will have a presentation after I wrap up mine, so it'll be Maz and then me again, and then we'll let Caltrans have a stab at it.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you, Commissioners. Maz Bozakini, Public Works Director, City Engineer. I just have a few slides I wanted to share with regards to some of the city efforts along the Highway 1 corridor. I've just listed a few items here. First and foremost is the Highway 1 North Improvements Project, which is the section of Highway 1 from North Main Street to Spindrift. That has been under final design and coordination with Caltrans with regards to this project, as it overlaps considerably. I won't go into a lot of details on that one, and we've talked a lot about that in the past. But there's a couple of other items I wanted to highlight, which is some of our Class 1 efforts along the Highway 1 corridor, as well as some corridor study that we have some grant funding for that we're going to be embarking on shortly. And finally, some local street safety plans that we've got, again, grant funding for. So some of the city efforts on the Class 1 bike path improvements that I wanted to highlight is, we have a map on the right side that does a good job describing the overall limits of some of our Class 1 facilities, as well as other trails along coastal zones, coastal areas. So just wanted to highlight the Segment 1, which is in blue in the middle of the screen. That's part of the Highway 1 North project that we just talked about. Just wanted to highlight that that project is looking to commence construction in 2025. We're just in the process of getting final approvals through the state. The Segment 2, which takes the project north and connects to the north of Frenchman's Creek and Rousseau Francais. So that's the segment from Spindrift to that existing pathway on the north side. We have $2 million through congressional district funding that we just obtained, and we're in the process of signing our agreements and going out for solicitation of consultants to start that project. And then we also received some additional congressional funding through an issues office for even starting to look into the east side parallel trail on the south side of the city limits, basically from Miramone's Point Road up to Higgins Canyon Road and Main Street. Now, just a little quick update on the Highway 1 South corridor study. We received some TA funding. We submitted a grant application to look at some of our highway improvements with respect to safety enhancements and other types of improvements, and we were successful in obtaining some funding. $750,000 effort with $675,000 in grant funding with a local match. This grant with the San Mateo County Transportation Authority also incorporates $200,000 in SMCTA staff support. So we're looking at starting this project up sometime in the next fiscal year, and this would look at an overall corridor study from Highway 92 down to the south end of town, and looking at all intersections and improvements. And this will be a process with respect to the community will be comprehensive as far as public outreach, and we want to hear from the community as far as what things are out there, what's working, what's not. And so that will be another project that we're going to be working on soon. On the right, this is just a snapshot as part of that grant application. It's the heat map for the areas of concern with respect to accident data. And so a lot of the signalized intersections and unsignalized intersections are highlighted there. And so this was part of the effort that we utilized to get funding towards this study. Based on this study, then, we would look at moving forward with a more comprehensive design and look at whether we do a full project or look at specific projects along this corridor. That'll be something that'll be born out of this document. And lastly, I just wanted to highlight one other effort the city is working on. We received a grant through the U.S. Department of Transportation for a Safe Streets for All analysis. Essentially, we're going to be putting together a Safe Streets for All Action Plan for our local roads and how those interact with each other, as well as connect to the highway corridor. And so this, again, is a grant-funded effort through the USDOT. $120,000 grant we were able to receive with a $30,000 local match, and we're in the process of finalizing our grant agreement, and that's another outreach process that we'll be starting up in the next fiscal year.
Thank you, Maz. And so just a little bit of record housekeeping here. We had extensive outreach and noticing for the March 26 hearing. That was continued to a date certain, so no additional noticing was required. We have received additional comments largely in response to the staff report and the attachments to that. Many of those we received yesterday and today, so they've been forwarded to the Planning Commission. I think some of the issues are highly technical, and so we're, I think, relying on Caltrans to explain in a little more layman's terms what it all means in response to some of those comments. I don't really want to get too far ahead of things here. I think we need to hear from Caltrans before people sort of assess what their comfort level is with the information they have in the record. Winner may want to chime in. Tonight's a little bit unusual because we only have three Commissioners. So you always have the option of approving or denying the project. You could continue it. That gets a little complicated because we're sort of booked up at the next meeting. Or one scenario is to look at modifying the project, maybe some conditions of approval that could address some concerns, see if those are amenable to everybody, and then move on. And so it's kind of a preliminary recommendation. I think we still need to hear from Caltrans. One thing we looked at was, could they just not stripe this part of Highway 1 from Surfers Beach up through Sam's? This was just a quick markup that I did. There's no engineering behind it. One scenario would be to divert some of the bicycle traffic at Capistrano, go down through the harbor, and then on the coastal trail, and then back to the highway. I've discussed this with the Harbor District. They welcome it. They think it's a good approach. I've contacted county planners. They don't really have clear guidance from the Coastal Commission on how they're going to address that appeal. So some of this, you know, we're sort of up in the air waiting for the Coastal Commission. So one scenario could be to add a condition. One thing, the green line on here is the city boundary. So if you use sort of the most feasible way to get off the highway at Capistrano, that's actually part of the county's coastal development permit. So they would have to modify their permit. So if we put that condition on, I think it's not rock solid. There's some moving pieces, but something to discuss tonight. And so I think I'm going to stop there and let Caltrans give their presentation, unless you have some questions before then.
Doug, just a point of clarification. The little stripe of land in that deck, between the yellow and the green on Highway 1 on the east side, that's actually county property, correct? From the middle of the road?
Like I said, our GIS mapping is not terribly accurate. Where it shows the green line, the city boundary should be in the middle of the highway, not over on the east side.
Okay. Thank you for that presentation, Doug. Does anyone from Caltrans wish to speak? Present? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, again, thank you, Commissioners, for having us at this meeting, this follow-up meeting from last two weeks ago. We're happy to present our project to you. I'm the Caltrans Project Manager. My name is Kelly Ma. And also, I want to thank Doug and Maz for presenting the project earlier and the future works within Highway 1. And again, I want to present our project and improvements along Highway 1. This is roughly a $34 million capital cost project within Highway 1, and this is a multi-asset roadway rehabilitation project. There we go. Okay. So our presentation outline is as shown. We'll be going over the project's scope, purpose, and then need, and then overview of the project elements, our coordination outreach summary. And then our focus discussion will be on the items we were discussing at the last Planning Commission meeting, and the Commissioners had requested additional information on it, as well as the public. So the five items would be construction phasing, night work in regards to noise and lighting, bike lane striping, including the sliver widening that we were talking about, drainage rehabilitation, and intersection improvements. Main focus is on Kelly Ave. And then the last topic will be Surfers Beach and the bike lanes proposed there. And so this slide shows the limits of the entire project. The project starts at Wavecrest Road in Half Moon Bay at the south end, and then ends in Marine Boulevard in Moss Beach. It is 7.3 miles along the coast within San Mateo County and the city of Half Moon Bay. And then today, we'll be primarily discussing the part of the projects that's within the city of Half Moon Bay and the city's LCP boundary that's shown in green on the slide. Going over the project's scope and overview, this project will repave Highway 1 from Marine Boulevard to Wavecrest Road for roughly 7.3 mile stretch or 14.6 miles northbound and southbound. This project will also convert the existing shoulder to a continuous Class 2 bike lane on Highway 1 in both directions, northbound and southbound. Again, that's from Marine Boulevard to Wavecrest Road and 14.6 miles if you count both northbound and southbound. This project will upgrade the existing guardrails to current safety standards. There are no new guardrails proposed on this project, but there are roughly 12 locations within the city of Half Moon Bay. And this project will also rehabilitate the drainage systems. There's roughly 300 feet that we would be rehabilitating. There are bus stop improvements on this project. We've been working with Samtrans on. There are four locations within the city of Half Moon Bay. And we will also stripe crosswalks and upgrade the curb ramps to ADA American with Disabilities Act standards. And there are 14 intersections where we would stripe the crosswalk. And lastly, we do upgrade the traffic operation system. Those are our TOS elements, and those include CCTVs and loops within the pavement. We have nine CCTVs and 27 loops on the project. Going into the project's purpose, the purpose of this project is to preserve and extend the life of Highway 1 to a condition that would require minimal maintenance expenditures, also improve the ride quality, include drainage rehabilitation, improve roadway safety, enhance pedestrian and bicycle access, and also upgrade the traffic system infrastructure. Regarding the project need, Highway 1 in this area, and why it was initiated, is because the pavement in Highway 1 in our project area was evaluated prior to the project, and it was in poor condition overall. And so Caltrans uses an international roughness index. It evaluates and determines how smooth or rough the ride is in this area, and if left untreated, Highway 1 would continue to degrade and provide those poor ride quality to users, and will require the frequent and expensive maintenance. In addition, the existing highway elements and facilities in the project area are worn out or functionally obsolete. out or functionally obsolete, so they do need to be replaced with this project. And the current traffic systems, such as guardrails, the crash cushions, drainage, they're approaching to the end of their life and need to be upgraded or rehabilitated. This project also includes complete streets improvements, and that includes mobility for all users, including bicyclists and pedestrians. And that is a priority for Caltrans and to improve the pedestrian bicycle conditions. To give more background on the Caltrans maintenance projects, I want to talk about a little bit about the funding of these projects and how it's incorporated into developing these projects. And these Caltrans maintenance projects are funded through our State Highway Operation and Protection Program, which we call our SHOP program. And the SHOP projects are primarily the State Highway Systems Fix-It-First program, and that funds the repair and preservation, emergency repairs, and safety improvements that don't add capacity to the system, so they don't add a traffic lane. And by continuously repairing and modernizing our state highway system, these SHOP projects protect the investments that have been made over many decades. The SHOP program is part of a long-term planning effort, and so these have a 10-year forecast. And these projects are adopted by and approved by the California Transportation Commission, the CTC, and that's approved every two years. The CTC also allocates the budgets for each phase of the project. And for this project, the CTC allocation budget for construction capital and also for our right-of-way capital is within the fiscal year of 2023-24. And therefore, our funding deadline to have design completed as well as all the permits for the project is for, and to request construction fund allocation is June of 2024. And then next, I'll go into the specifics of our project improvements. So these are images of the existing pavement along Highway One. The project will repave Highway One for the entire limits to provide a better ride quality and extend the lifespan of the highway. In addition, there would be ladder-type striping, provide crosswalks on the image to the right. This slide shows the Class II bike lane limits in green, and the city of Half Moon Bay local coastal program jurisdiction is also shown on the map in the dotted black lines. So aligned with our District Four Bicycle Plan and also San Mateo County Connect the Coastide Plan, the project proposes to convert the existing shoulder to a bike lane on both northbound and southbound for the entire project limits, providing a continuous bike lane for 7.3 miles one-way or roughly 14.6 miles total. And the existing shoulder is eight feet foot, and then would be converted to six-feet bike lanes with two-feet buffer. And then we'll also go into more detail of the proposed bike lanes at the end of their Next slide goes into the bike imped improvements. So in addition to the bicycle lanes, we also have crosswalks and stop bars that are being added to the following intersections to improve bicyclists and pedestrian safety at all crossings of the Naomi Patridge Trail. The Filbert location is shown on the screen, and there would be proposed ladder-style crosswalk and modifications to the existing stop bar to enhance safety. The bike lane can also be seen in both directions with the green markings and the bicycle symbol after each crossing. These intersection locations, there are roughly 14 locations where there is an intersection crossing to improve pedestrian safety. Regarding the guardrails, these are photos of the existing conditions of the bike, oh, guardrails, sorry. These guardrails are obsolete, and the metalbeam guardrail will be replaced with our current safety standard, which is the Midwest Guardrail. Only the existing guardrail will be replaced. There will be no new guardrails in this project. The new guardrails will look very similar to the existing ones, and it's in our environmental commitment record that they would have a matte finish used on the new guardrails to make sure that they look like the same as prior. This is a location, this is an image of the locations of the existing guardrails that will be replaced by the project. Again, there's 12 within the city of Half Moon Bay. And this image is, shows our drainage rehabilitation scope to replace in kind the old culverts within this project that are at the end of their life. The culverts span from east to west direction in blue on the screen. And at the beginning of this project, we did have a culvert inspection report completed, and there are three locations that were identified within the city of Half Moon Bay where we will be replacing three 18-inch culverts, and that these will not be increasing the flow of the existing conditions as they will be replaced in kind. There is also an existing ditch that would be cleaned out in this project. And typically, our maintenance crews will clean the culverts along Highway One on an annual basis, and typically that is in early fall in anticipation for the storms. And they do clean out the culverts as needed based on the storms and also the customer service requests that we receive. Our maintenance team, you know, is small, but we are committed to resolving the staffing needs and also the needs along Highway One. I'll turn it over to Dylan to go over the biofiltration strips.
Thank you. And let me adjust this real quick. Thank you, commissioners. I'm Dylan Lennebaker with AECOM, supporting Caltrans on this project. In this slide, we're looking at some biofiltration strip locations that are proposed to be implemented as part of the project. The project will be implementing biofiltration strips at four roadside locations within the Half Moon Bay area. Biofiltration strips are engineered elements with sloped vegetated land designed to treat stormwater runoff from the paved roadways where pollutants of concern are produced. Biofiltration strips are highly effective at removing sediments, metals, oil, and grease. These measures improve water quality in groundwater and surface waters. The project is required to provide an onsite treatment for new and reworked impervious surfaces by the Regional Water Quality Control Board in the waste discharge requirements issued to the project and shared with the commission that wasted, I believe you received the WDR, correct? Yeah. And with the State Water Board's National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permit issued to Caltrans for the state. Caltrans is meeting and exceeding treatment requirements for onsite treatment for this project, and the project results in improved stormwater management for the corridor. This slide shows the first biostrip location just south of Seymour Street. Let me see if I can flip here. And here, we're showing the biostrip location near Spindrift Avenue. There's two biostrips proposed here. And then the fourth one is just north of Rousseau-Français Avenue. And with that, I am going to hand this back over to Kelly to speak on bus stop improvements.
Thanks, Dylan. And so now I'll be moving on to the bus stop improvements on this project. There are existing SAM Trans bus stops that are along Highway One. This is an example of Spindrift Way and Roosevelt Boulevard. You can see that the stops currently along Highway One shoulder do not have ADA-compliant sidewalk connections. So this project will add that ADA-compliant sidewalk connection to SAM Trans bus stops Key Host, Spindrift, Rousseau-Français, and Roosevelt Boulevard. On the screen is an image of ADA American with Disabilities Act upgrades, and this is an example of the curb ramp we would be installing on this project. The project will upgrade noncompliant curb ramps in the intersections within this project This is a map of our traffic operation system improvements within the project area. These include cameras to monitor traffic conditions in real time and also to communicate with our Traffic Management Center in Oakland. And the project will also install loops below the highway pavement that will keep track of traffic volumes. These are images of the proposed traffic operation system elements. There are nine CCTVs and 27 loops proposed on the project. So this slide goes over our coordination and outreach summary. We wanted to highlight, from the years of 2021 to 2024, we've coordinated and partnered with local agency and stakeholders that have been shown on the screen about the project elements that are included in this project. We understand that this community has a lot of stakeholders, and we want to ensure that we reach out to the stakeholders and receive their input, and that's why we did this advanced stakeholder outreach. And so this includes the California Coastal Commission, the Office of Assemblymember Kevin Mullen, San Mateo County, City of Half Moon Bay, California Water Board, Coastide on Bikes, CHP, San Mateo County Sheriff's Department, SAM Trans, Midcoast Community Council, Half Moon Bay Coastside Chamber of Commerce, CAL FIRE, and U.S. Fish and Wildlife, to name a few. This is a table with our coordination and outreach summary. Back in September of 2021, Caltrans hosted a joint preliminary stakeholder outreach meeting to provide a summary of the project as well as another project we had on Highway One. The attendees are listed on the screen, but the purpose of having this meeting is for advanced stakeholder outreach to receive that stakeholder feedback. Our next meeting was in March of 2022, and this was a follow-up stakeholder outreach meeting prior to the circulation of our draft environmental document, and the participants are also listed on the screen. In April 2022, there were two days where we had focus meetings with these stakeholders, and we received and incorporated their feedback. In July to August of 2022, we had the public circulation period for the draft environmental document where all interested parties could review and comment on our project. In July of 2022, we also hosted a public open house meeting for the draft environmental document. Anyone could have attended that one. And then in December of 2023, we had a joint meeting with San Mateo County, City of Half Moon Bay, California Coastal Commission to discuss the CDP application. And then in February, at the end of February 2024, we had our San Mateo County Planning Commission meeting where the San Mateo County portion of the project was approved. But I do want to note that we do have appeal for this current CDP with Coastal Commission. And we're working very closely with them on that. And then I'll hand this slide to Dylan to go over the construction phasing and night work, and this starts our focus discussion. Well, we're going to have our subject matter experts speak more to these topics. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Kelly. We prepared this slide to address some specific questions from our last hearing, as basically we had noted that the Caltrans standard specifications for work at night would not exceed 86 decibels A-weighted. And the question was, well, what does that mean? You know, we provided a number, so we wanted to prepare something that puts that in more relative and understandable terms. So what we're looking at here is, on the table on the left, you'll see distances 5100, 200, 400, 800 feet. And on the right is the noise level of 86 decibels that's the limit at 50 feet that the standard specifications require. That would be someone standing out in the open air with nothing between them. You know, this is not, maybe a real-world situation, but often there's a lot more to the landscape. And then to the right is the decibel level of somebody that would be in their house with their window closed with a standard window. And we provided an additional one for anybody that might have the luxury of having a storm window in their house. What this shows on the table to the right is what that noise reference chart means. So at 50 feet, 86 decibels standing out there would be, you know, pretty loud. It would be like standing next to a loud freeway. And then at that same distance with your window closed would be 66 decibels, which would be close to somewhere between like a vacuum, you'd be standing next to a vacuum cleaner running or a normal conversation. Most of the houses that are near this project area aren't quite that close to the roadwork that'll be happening. Those distances are later down, further down in those rows are probably more representative of some of the nearby homes that would be near the construction activities at night. So when we're looking at, we looked at the project area, and there are some homes that are within that 200-foot range, right? So we look at that row, and we see at 50 feet, it's 74, which is still pretty loud. You're still out there next to loud traffic during that construction noise. But when you're in your home with the window closed, that's a much more reasonable noise level equivalent to somewhere between rainfall and the dishwasher running in your home, which we hope is a little bit more easy to understand when we provide these numbers for these noise values. And we'll go to the next one. This one is to address another question about what is the lighting effects of the project. So regarding construction lighting, the type of portable lighting used would be determined in pre-construction. So this would be essentially the specific lighting elements that are going to be used would be determined by the contractor selected. It is in the project's environmental commitment record that construction activities will limit all construction lighting to within the area of work and use directional lighting, shielding, and other measures as needed to avoid light trespass into residential areas. Additionally, construction personnel will turn portable light, tower lights, excuse me, on no more than 30 minutes before the beginning of civil twilight and no more than 30 minutes after the end of civil sunrise. Portable tower lights will have directional shields attached to them, and personnel will only direct lights downward and toward active construction and staging areas. This will be enforced by the Caltrans resident engineer during construction. And what we're showing here in this photo is portable lighting. This is on a different project, but we wanted to give a picture to kind of show what that lighting looks like during construction at night. And with that, I'm going to hand over the presentation to my colleague, Song, who's going to discuss the construction staging.
Thank you, Dylan. Good evening, planning commissioners. I'm Song Kim. I'm the project designer on the project. Project has four construction stages. Main activity of the project is existing asphalt grind and overlay work. In the roadway, the project will grind 0.3 feet of the AC, and we pave them to the matching existing grade. No roadway will be, roadway profile will be changed on the project. Also, project will grind and overlay 0.1 feet of AC on multi-motor trailer, which will get a fresh look on the trail. And following slide will show how construction stage will work. For the demonstration purposes, we are working at the zoomed-in part of the Highway One between Seymour and Grove Streets, and AC grind and overlay work will be performed in a maximum of 1,000 feet increments within nighttime work. Therefore, construction will not impact any commit hour traffics. During the construction stage one, AC pavement work will be on the southbound lane side of the Highway One and multi-motor trailer. The work segments in maximum 1,000 feet continues to the north side of the, of the north side until the end of the project limits. For the traffic control, the northbound traffic will be shifted towards the northbound shoulders, and southbound traffic will be shifted towards the northbound side. We will use the traffic cones for traffic detours and transitions. Pavement will be placed without the 0.1 feet of the final overlay, which will be placed in the final stage four. Temporary striping will be placed until final overlay is placed. Once the work is completed, traffic will be shifted back to original condition in the morning hours. During stage construction two, project plans to grind and overlay AC payments along the center turn lanes. Northbound traffic will be shifted towards the northbound shoulder, and southbound traffic will be shifted towards the southbound shoulder. Stage construction two work will continue in maximum 1,000 feet segments to the north until the project end limit. until the project end limit. During construction stage three, project plans to grind overlay AC payments along the northbound side of the Highway One. And for the traffic controls, southbound traffic will be shifted towards the southbound shoulder and then northbound traffic will be shifted towards the southbound lane. And stage three will continue to the north until the project end limit. This is the construction stage four, which is the final stage of the project. Construction will place the 0.1 feet of the final overlay on entire Highway One. At the end, the final striping will be placed, including the bike lanes markings on the shoulders. As I mentioned earlier by one of our team member, project proposed to convert existing shoulders to six-foot bike lane with a two-foot buffer. Wherever existing shoulder is not eight foot wide, the project proposed to sliver widen the shoulders. There are two sliver shoulder widening locations within the city limits. This slide shows the first sliver shoulder widening on north of the Filbert Street. It's about 423 linear foot in length and width varies from zero to five feet. The area is about 0.02 acres. And this slide shows the second sliver shoulder widening location just the south of the Mirada Road. It's about 200 linear feet in length and width varies from zero to five feet. It's about 0.01 acres areas. With this location and the other location, total pavement, new pavement area is about 0.03 acres on the project. Next, I will turn it over to Kai to discuss the drainage rehabilitation on the project.
Thanks, Sang. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Kai Liang. I'm the office chief for District Four Office of Hydraulic Engineering. Following on, on sliver widening. So the widening will not alter existing drainage patterns. Runoff from the widening areas will continue to sheet flow into adjacent unpaved areas as it currently does. The table you see on your screen summarizes the calculated flow increases from the sliver widening. The expected flow increase from location one is about 0.017 CFS and from location two is 0.0171 CFS, which is, the increases are less than 0.1% at both locations when compared with the overall drainage basin. And next, I'll be discussing the drainage rehabilitation work on this project. So these pictures, this picture shows the outfall of the culvert Grove Street. And the next page shows the outfall of the culverts at Filbert and at Poplar Street. And we also had, as mentioned earlier by Kelly, we had conducted culvert inspections for this project. And on the next slide, we, we show the conditions of the, of some of these culverts. So the picture on the left is the Grove Street culvert. The one on the right is Poplar Street. As you can see, there's joint damage to the joints and there's some issues of pipe alignments. And that's why we are replacing these culverts in kind with the same size pipe and same materials. This project also proposes to install flat-in sections and a rock slope protection pad at the entrance and outfall of the culvert that we're replacing. This is to prevent scour and to dissipate the flow after it exits and when it enters the pipe. The graphic on the left shows a typical plan view of a FES and RSP pad. And the picture on the right shows a sample of FES and RSP as it's constructed in the field. And I'll hand this over to Sang for the discussion on Kelly.
Hi, Sang Yan. Project proposed to add additional safety features for pedestrians and bicyclists, bicyclists at the Kelly Avenue. Blue boxes are previously presented the last Planning Commission meeting and red boxes are newly added on the project per recommendation from the city planner. As you can see, we are adding the, in the blue text, we are adding a new pedestrian refugee island. Also, we are adding curbs, paint the curbs yellow for the island curbs. Also, we are replacing one signal pole with a new intersection safety lights. And also, one lighting pole will be added at the Kelly Avenue. It's a northeast corner in front of the gas station. That's the new street lights we've been adding on the project for the, you know, intersection crossing safety. Also, you can see that green bike, class two bike lanes are added on the both side of the southbound and northbound. Also, we are adding ladder-type crosswalk with a square crossing. That's, they will be striped in the yellow color. Also, we are adding the advanced signees for the, for the turning vehicles here to the pedestrians, that warning sign. Also, we, for the new improvements highlighted in red, red box, we are adding a new stop bars before making right free turns at two locations. Also, we, we are adding, as well as we are adding new square crossing signs at those two, of those four locations. This slide shows the diagram of pedestrians and bicycle configuration at Kelly Avenue on the project. And next, I'll turn it over to Dylan, who will discuss about Surfers Beach improvements.
Great, thank you. And I think that Doug did a good job of presenting this already of showing where our understanding of the Half Moon Bay authority is for the coastal development permit that we're seeking here. It is consistent with what your planner provided to you. So, and this is also consistent with the, the area of jurisdiction that we included in our figures that were provided in our CDP application. So to the right there, we see the terminal end of the Half Moon Bay area of authority north of the Chowder House there. And then to the left, as you can see, and as noted earlier, the, the area of jurisdiction runs right down the middle of State Route One and then jogs off of the route into the beach over there at Surfers Beach. And I'm going through these next few slides to illustrate what the project is proposing in this location, because there were a lot of questions about it and I wanted to make sure that we illustrated for the commission here what the project is proposing. So if you look on the left, that is, and you can see, we've also included the, the Half Moon Bay area of authority here in that dash black and white line. So on the bottom lane there, that's the southbound lane. And you can see there is green striping to indicate a shared bike lane. So this, this project is proposing to convert the existing shoulder into a shared bike path and shoulder, it's a class two bike path. And we're going to move down the road here as it goes by. You can see there's some striping to show where the entrance and exit point is there. And then there's some striping also over at the RV parking area. And as we move down towards Surfers Beach is consistent. That area at Surfers Beach there, where there is a curb right above the, the existing riprap there is already painted red for no parking. That paint is, is pretty well faded, so that will be included as part of the project to repaint that so that it's a little bit more clear than it currently is. And to the, on the upper end of that is, is the area where, it's in the San Mateo County area of jurisdiction. There's some areas where people park. There's a half, the skateboard halfpipe there. Moving further south in these images, you can see where the Half Moon Bay authority dips down into the, the shoreline there. Above this, in that area to the north, I want to point out is an environmentally sensitive area. That's potential California red-legged frog habitat. And we want, we're also showing the, the crosswalk over on the right to illustrate where we are encouraging people to cross at that signalized intersection. One of the, the key components of this project's proposal and this change here is safety. Currently, the, the practices out there of people crossing in the middle of the road outside of that, that signalized intersection is a safety hazard for both them and for motorists and bicycles using it. So the goal here is to provide a safe multimodal transportation facility that really prioritizes bicycle use on State Route One over cars parking and outside the shoulder. And with that, I'm going to hand this over to Greg Curry from CAL Trans to present these next few slides.
Hello, commissioners. I'm Greg Curry. I'm the pedestrian and bicycle branch chief in CAL Trans District Four Planning. You have heard some of the content I'm going to share, so I may move through it a little bit quickly. But we have some, some visualizations of what, what this bike lane is going to look like. So this is existing conditions. We are looking north, but we are in the southbound lane. And then this is what this project would do. So you see the, the southbound bike lane on the left. That's six feet wide with the two-foot buffer. And then you can also see the, the red painted curb. That, that red paint is existing, but it would be refreshed as part of this project. Just to clarify that, this is not to be parked in. And then this is still looking north, but now in the northbound lane. This is the existing condition. And then here is what this project would, would propose. So you can see again, a six-foot wide bike lane and a two-foot wide buffer northbound as well as southbound. And you can probably see those new no parking signs, which would prohibit the, the informal parking along this segment of State Route One in order to allow bicyclists to, to ride through it without interruption. And as Kelly mentioned earlier, this is in line with the county's Connect the Coastside Plan, which proposes class two bike lanes. And it's also supported by the CAL Trans District Four Bike Plan to improve access both to and through the area for bicyclists. And so now I will hand it back over to Kelly to wrap it up.
Thank you, Greg. This is our last slide. This goes over why we want to, why we propose this bicycle lane. So again, this bicycle lane does align with the CAL Trans department goals for a multimodal transportation network and also complete streets. In our CAL Trans projects, we now incorporate not only transportation improvements for vehicles, but also equally for pedestrians and bicyclists, understanding there are various modes of transportation. The bike lane is also aligned with our CAL Trans District Four Bicycle Plan, which was developed in 2018 and includes input from various stakeholders and is one of the core reasons why the bicycle lane was included in this project. CAL Trans identified an area that could benefit from a bicycle lane. And with this upcoming project, we are implementing that need. The bike lane is also aligned with the San Mateo Connect the Coastside Transportation Plan, which was adopted in 2022. That improves the mobility and safety for the coastside residents and visitors. San Mateo County is a strong supporter of the proposed bike lanes. And we have, you know, been informing them about the bike lanes from the very beginning of the project as well as City of Half Moon Bay and our various stakeholders. And CAL Trans understands the concerns of converting the existing shoulder to a bike lane in each direction. I do want to note that the existing shoulder is not formal. It's not designated or marked as a parking space. And therefore, I know it was mentioned at the last meeting, but a parking study was not completed for this project. And the CAL Trans pavement rehabilitation project will not be providing replacement parking as the use of the shoulder is informal and not designated. We encourage the city and county as well as the private businesses, if needed, to work with CAL Trans for future projects that may include parking within CAL Trans right-of-way. And we would be happy to work with them in an encroachment permit that would utilize CAL Trans right-of-way if needed. We believe this project does not remove coastal access. Rather, it adjusts how coastal access is used within this area of Surfers Beach, as well as it provides bicycle coastal access. The use of the shoulder also causes some unsafe conditions and out CAL Trans safety is our number one priority. Any projects we develop, we enhance safety and the bicycle lanes provide a designated continuous bike lane for the northbound and southbound direction roughly 14.6 miles. And not every county and city along the coast can say that they do have a continuous bike lane feature for that long, along the stretch of Highway One. And the designated continuous bike lane will provide bicyclists the safety of having their own lane and eliminate, you know, the weaving and in and out of the cars when they are utilizing the shoulder. For pedestrians as well, there's a safety component as the informal use of the shoulder has caused pedestrians to cross live traffic from the east side to the west side. CAL Trans encourages pedestrians to utilize our signalized intersections and crosswalks. And this is the end of our presentation. I would like to thank the commissioners as well as City of Half Moon Bay Planning and MAS about, you know, presenting this project. And thank you for the opportunity to come back. I also want to thank our project team and our subject matter experts for being here in person and online. And we hope we did answer your questions from last meeting and concerns. This has been a five-plus-year effort from CAL Trans from project initiation to now. And we do hope, you know, with the investments that are in San Mateo County and City of Half Moon Bay in improving the ride quality, the ADA curb ramps, the guardrails, the traffic management investment systems and complete streets within Highway One, we are set to complete our 100% design soon. And then we hope to obtain all permits by the funding deadline of June of 2024. And this project is important to us to maintain the safety within the highway, the state highway system. And we don't want to lose the funding for this project. And I hope you can see the value that this brings to the coast. And we're really excited to, you know, start these improvements and start construction. So again, thank you for listening to our presentation. If you have any questions, feel free to send them our way. We also have CHP in attendance. They've talked to them about the existing conditions as well as the proposed conditions. And they've kindly offered to answer any questions as well. So with that, thank you for listening to our presentation. And we can take any questions.
Thank you so much for your presentation. At this point, I think I would like to open it up to public comment. And we did have a request to extend the time for public comment per person. And I, since we don't have a lot of people in attendance, I was going to suggest maybe four minutes per person for every single person so that we're fair about that. So at this point, I'd like to open it up to public comment. And our first speaker is James Benjamin.
Good evening, commissioners, staff, CAL Trans and other members of the public. I'm Jimmy Benjamin. I live at 400 Pillar Cidos Avenue here in town. I wrote a three-page letter in response to the initial staff report that had a number of concerns. I got to read my edition of the Saturday Evening Post when the new report came out. And I appreciated the chance to read the addendum. There were a couple of things that I felt were important to call out in that addendum. And in my letter, I mentioned, it appears that there are just two places where the bicycle lanes would result in widened pavement. And the project in its boilerplate conditions might not capture that accurately. So I want to be sure that you are clear in your conditions. Otherwise, if your boilerplate condition says it's in accordance with the plans and the plans didn't say where the bicycle lane is, you're leaving that door wide open. And I hope that won't happen. Similarly, in my contact with CAL Trans, it's become clear that they do not intend to widen the outer shoulder-to-shoulder distance anywhere else in the project. Once again, it's important to condition the project to reflect that because that wasn't clear in the existing conditions. I appreciated the presentation and the additional data on the culverts. I thought those were really helpful. And I, seeing the rock slope protection was helpful in thinking about how energy would dissipate. If the culvert has currently got sediment built into it, even if it's regularly cleared, it's going to be in a different condition when it's clear. And as we know, these areas drain into the Myrtle Culvert and they drain and they drain into Seymour. These are both culvert, drainage riparian areas or corridors that are experiencing erosion. That erosion is not the result of any one project. It's the result of cumulative project. And rather than ask for the analysis that shows that, in my letter, I suggested perhaps that you could get a before-and-after measurement and observe the potential for scour in the vicinity of the exit of the culvert and take appropriate steps if that or other geomorphic impacts are observed. Finally, although it wasn't discussed in the presentations tonight, it was in the report that new Cobra-style lighting is proposed at Russo-Francais and at Kelly Avenue. As I mentioned in my letter, I'm a little concerned about its compatibility with the Town Boulevard concept and hope that you can revise the project. And as I understand from Kelly, they are amenable to finding a way to work with us to be compatible by taking that large Cobra light and bringing it down to the scale, the pedestrian scale that's envisioned in Chapter 9 of our local coastal program. Those were the comments I prepared. I did include a drawing and a couple of pictures. And I'm happy to walk you through that. I can't do it in four minutes. In the comments that I heard from Caltrans tonight, it was all very encouraging. I will say that I appreciated the awareness of the frog habitat close to the harbor. It may be worth pointing out that Frenchman's Creek is also habitat for the California red-legged frog and San Francisco garter snake. That's one of the locations where the lights, potentially disorienting lights, could be. It also has the sensitive receptors of homes and of the monarch butterfly habitat and the California State Beach Group parking area. So I think it's really important for us to be careful about that. I appreciated the noise presentation. My recollection is that doubling the distance from a point source does reduce the noise level by about six decibels. However, my perception is that this is a linear source. And if my recollection is correct, that would actually reduce the noise, sound pressure levels by three decibels, not six decibels, for a linear source. So it may be that we're overstating the benefits. I am concerned about the homes that are immediately adjacent to this project. And it may be that when the construction is the most intense, the nicest thing we could do would be to find a way for them to be somewhere else during that loud nearby phase of construction. I'm happy to walk you through any other comments that I'd made that you'd want me to give you clarity for. I want to emphasize that the boilerplate conditions and the original versions of the project are not sufficiently specific to provide assurance of compatibility with the local coastal program policies that I outlined in my letters. I believe that there's daylight for us to resolve it and that not to be an issue. But I do think that the coastal access parking versus bicycle and the pork chops at Kelly remain significant questions that warrant additional deliberation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for that. Our next speaker will be Paul Nagengast. And then after that, I believe Mike Ferrera online.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Caltrans, Kelly, hi.
And I just wanted to first point out to the Commissioners, I really stress that you asked the right questions. And make sure you're comfortable because I think the community has said several safety improvements that they would like out there. So make sure that you've asked the questions and you're satisfied whether something gets done now or somebody says, well, we have a plan for it later. And I'll, and just be careful with a plan later. I can tell you from experience, I was here 20 years ago, and we had a plan. And then I left, you know, by the way, we had Beechwood. You know, by the way, we had the Great Recession. And priorities change, you get that. So anything that gets, said we're going to get it, just make sure we, we're going to get it. And in the Caltrans presentation, I had a number of items. I'm just going to go through it. I just picked up on it. These are no way any priority or importance, but things maybe the Commissioners can consider in their discussions. Just bike riders will always use Highway 1. You're not going to divert them. The serious, anybody rides a bike on Highway 1 is a serious bike rider, and they're not going to run into the harbor. The ones that are using the bike trail in the harbor, which I've done with my son years ago, you're, they're going to still use that. So I'm not sure you could get any success diverting bike riders. I was happy to hear shop. Last time I heard about shop monies, and this is S-H-O-P-P, that you couldn't do safety improvements, that was only maintenance. I saw tonight, you can do safety improvements with this money and highway operational improvements. This may help, you know, hey, there is a way. If the monies are there, or you can find monies, Kelly Avenue and I know Poplar, which are still within the, up to Wavecrest in the southern end of the city. I appreciate that. And there are no new traffic lanes proposed on any safety improvements. It was strictly the pork chops. And it's adding, remember, you got to put a bigger signal pole and a mast arm on that. But it's just the flip side, what's over on the western portion of the intersection. Also, I think it's important to notice they're putting stop bars in front of crosswalks. And that's something I've always stressed. So I think that was a good safety improvement. Nighttime work is loud. I remember Highway 92, we did it at night. It's loud. And at night, go out on your back porches. I can hear a motorcycle from one end of town to the other end of town on Highway 1. I mean, it is what it is. But daytime work would be, it would not work out here. So night would work, but I would suggest that perhaps you, and I don't know who would be the keeper of this, you have a functioning webpage that provides weekly updates, where the work's going to be, what it's going to have, and a place for people to vent. You just need to have that. I just spent three years on the Foster City Levy Project. And I can tell you, you need to let them vent. So as long as there's some type of public relations firm, maybe. And I don't know if this is a Caltrans or a city. Maybe it's a partnership, but something, just the community knows where everybody's going to be and what the expectations are. You got to be truthful. If it's going to be bad, just tell them that, but just to have something. Again, I go back to also that Kelly and Highway 1, because I'm across there a lot. If you're putting a sidewalk, I thought I saw a reconstructing sidewalk on the near Trace Amigos sidewalk there, extend it to the coast house. To me, that's, it's an easy improvement. You can use shop monies. And then this gets into about the parking. Is that Surfers Beach? And we've talked about removing all that. To me, if it's a safety problem, what are we doing about it now? All of a sudden, is it a safety problem now? Or is it when they put the bike lane in there? And as far as keeping people to cross at the intersections, unless you put a deterrence or some distance in the middle, they're going to cross because I think jaywalking is not even, we can ask the highway patrol here, but I'm not sure even jaywalking is something that's illegal. So I know you want the crossing, but something that's been done for 40 years, good luck with that. I was, I had a number of questions regarding what the project included, type of paving, what, if the profiles were changed. And Caltrans has said, I heard again tonight, they're not changing the profile of the roadway. As we know, some of the approaches to Highway 1 can be interesting at times. And I think, especially with Ted's crossing on the trail. So I think Caltrans is meeting those safety questions. The drainage, and this is, I think, Mr. Benjamin brought it up a little bit when he last spoke. The, when you clean something and water starts running through it, is the community going to see something that wasn't there before? And maybe, maybe not, but I think that's the question to ask. I thought that's what was trying to be asked at the last meeting. But when these things are plugged, yep. And it'd be great, you know, if they do finally get something that actually works. But just the community has to be aware that all of a sudden water might be flowing where it wasn't before. And then some of these improvements that may be necessary that related to safety that aren't, aren't part of the project now, if they can kind of get in, whether it's now or because it's a year project, maybe something could be done later. Can we just, if there's some concern about the environmental that may, it's not part of this. Many times I've found, since it's still within the area and there's no real widening happening, a simple environmental memo to the file sometimes suffices on that. I'm an engineer, not a planner, so I have no idea what, if that's true or not. But I've seen it happen before. And I know I've probably extended my time. And that concludes, if I have to say. Thank you very much. And again, I think it's great that communities get some attention for a project. But again, 20 years from now, I, hopefully, we don't have the same discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, can you unmute yourself?
Yes, I did once, and I got muted again. I don't quite know how that happened. But good evening, Commissioner Gossett. The, I'll start with a question just because I saw the expression "stop bar", and my mind started trying to construct, what's a stop bar? And I've not encountered it before. So it would be kind of nice to have an explanation of what that is. I didn't understand it. I would say that when we did the stop light at Frenchman's Creek, one of the conditions was to avoid the raptor nesting season for the night work in those heavy groves of trees. And of course, that was almost 20 years ago. So I could see where that would not be in the memory banks still. But I think it is kind of important, given what we've heard about noise and light, et cetera, et cetera. The, when, in looking at who the Caltrans coordinated with, I saw that they got Coastside Bikes, which is probably not one of our major organizations out here for this kind of thing. But I'm sure they represented their interests well. But if they had coordinated with, or reached out to Surf Rider, I think a lot of what we're talking about tonight might well have been addressed in the planning stage long before we got to tonight because Surf Rider, I believe, would have pointed out the problems in that northern area about eliminating parking in the coastal zone. Coastal access issue, Chapter 3 and all that. We, from what I heard from the presenters, I think that had they known all that, they wouldn't be in the position they're in now of trying to assert that it's illegal parking and we're just going to take them off there. The thing I thought I heard at the earlier meeting was that we would have a Coastal Commission opinion on that tonight. And we don't seem to. And that's pretty important. The issue is not so much that you can't remove it, it's that you have to mitigate it. That happened to us in other circumstances. The, that missing element tonight for the Planning Commission is a big one. You know, obviously, I go back to the old days of Peter Douglas running the Coastal Commission. So I understood what happened with the Coastal Commission then. It may have changed, I don't know. But I can tell you that they were absolute on the idea of mitigating loss of coastal access. And if that is still their thing, then I, there is room on the Caltrans right-of-way, especially at Coronado, to create a parking area on the other side of the highway on Caltrans property. And I think that if the people doing this project had been aware of the Coastal Commission's seriousness about that issue, they would probably easily have incorporated that, I think. There is a problem with that bypass that was proposed in the initial staff report in that there is no coastal trail at one point there. It's washed out. Theoretically, that's part of another project to fix that. But we don't know anything about that project. If you're driven by there, you've seen the chunk that's out of it. And in fact, that whole stretch there is kind of imperiled, I would say, to try to divert all the bike traffic onto it. So I'm kind of glad I'm not in the shoes of the Planning Commission tonight. As to what to do, it's just the absence of a comment from the Planning Commission makes it very, very difficult. I mean, from the Coastal Commission, makes it very, very difficult to go forward. I think I, That's about it. I have other issues here, but I think you need to move onward. And how to render an opinion that's consistent with the OCP and Chapter 3 of the Coastal Act and as interpreted by the Coastal Commission is a tough task for you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Len Erickson.
Yes, thank you. Earlier, I had an email from the project, your project person, that Bridget Jet had been giving slides I wanted to show. Do you have those?
They, yes, they have them present in front of them.
No, I meant it's a soft copy. I sent a soft copy. It could be shown on the screen. Or can you let me show my screen?
Sure. Let me, actually, we can pull it up. Yeah, we could, if you want to go ahead and present, the Planning Commission has it in front of them. And we have it, we'll be posting it on the website. It is in there, but go ahead.
So why don't we go to the next speaker? And Len, we're going to pull up your slides so that we can present those for you while you are presenting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Len.
All right, let me switch. Next I have is James.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Ah, great. Yeah, my name is James Pernilliam. I'm actually representative from the Coastside on Bikes. I do the advocacy. I work with Carlene, the Safe Routes Coordinator. I've definitely worked with Kelly, Ma, and Caltrans. And I just want to say, thank you Commissioners for hearing me out. I just have a couple of things to bring up on the proposal, which we've reviewed many times and are very happy about. But there's a couple of things we'd really like to focus in on. Highway 1 and Kelly Avenue. Highway 1 and Kelly Avenue, you, we've heard a couple other speakers bring this up, the removal of the Porkchop Islands is pretty important to us. Both cyclists and pedestrians are forced to wait for the light to change on a tiny, dangerous island that cannot fit anything more than a child's stroller. And the northbound right turn onto Kelly is a limited visibility turn for drivers. This basically is setting up dangerous conditions and for the possibility of getting across town from one side to the other. Even with the proposed additional bike lanes, these dangers still remain. So again, the pork chop, the little pork chop that people have to stand on in the middle of the road while traffic is zooming by, you think is extremely dangerous. And also, Highway 1 and Kelly Avenue, this is a main route for children to cross to get to Cunha and also to get to Hatch. This is a main route for kids to cross the street between the two sides. Also, on Highway 1 between Kelly and 92, we are asking for additional pedestrian walkway on the west side. So on the opposite, there's already a crosswalk, but we want on the other, on the other side as well. The proposed bike lanes on both sides will exclude pedestrian traffic and may in fact take away existing use of the west side of the highway by pedestrians, if that makes sense. Highway 1 and Wavecrest South to Merrimontes Road, I don't think this is in part of the plan, but the addition of a bike lane from Wavecrest to South City Limit, a safe bike route to the neighborhood south of town, specifically to Moon Ridge Community, I think this, well, we believe, this must be created through the creation of a Class 2 bike path. Current riding conditions are unsafe along the highway due to a lack of bike lane, eroding, and bumpy pavement. If anyone's ridden there, it's extremely dangerous. You basically have to ride in the middle of the highway, not in the middle, but on, basically in the highway. And the last piece is Highway 1 and Poplar Street, which is also another route for children to cross to get to Hatch, also going to Cunha the opposite way. An addition of an east-west crosswalk on the north side of curb extensions on all four corners. This is a main route for students crossing, accessing to the three different schools. Students ride bicycles on the south crosswalk, putting them in direct collision course with pedestrians and other cyclists. The city will, is in the process of putting sidewalks on the north side as part of the Poplar Street Enhancement Project, but unfortunately, I think the Caltrans plan is not to put a crosswalk on the north side. So it would be basically lacking. Pedestrians would have to crisscross a few different ways, and we know how popular, popular Poplar Street is. Again, that's all I have to say. Thank you for considering our recommendations, which we believe will help our community in its ongoing efforts to be more bicycle and pedestrian friendly. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, James.
Okay. Next, we'll go back to Len. He's, we're ready to go, so we have his here. Go ahead, Len.
Thank you. Okay, on the slides, are they up?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Before doing this, I noted the sliver approach that they described, and it's certainly the case that in the midcoast unincorporated area, there are areas where they could not provide a sliver, most notably at the Medio Creek, where the guardrails could not be widened enough. And in there, their solution was to take the Class 2 bike lane and divert it onto the multimodal trail that is adjacent to it. And just as the larger-scale diversion that was suggested earlier, I just don't think that that's an appropriate thing to try to do with a Class 2 bicycle lane. But moving on to my slides, show the first slide after the title slide. Primarily here, I want to look at the impact of the different areas that have been affected. This slide really, in the straight yellow line, shows Highway 1 between Capistrano and Coronado and highlights some different areas that are of concern. The first one, the first yellow oval on the left, that is where Sam's is located. The larger one oval below is, basically centers on the dirt lot in the area that used to be known as the Burnham Strip. It is an area planned for a major park effort by the Granada Community Services District, but this slide was taken on September 26, 2020, when the use of the shoulders was quite heavy, so it sort of presents a maximum load on this. So I'll be talking about that in a little bit more detail. In the Harbor District, you have RV, overnight parking restroom for the handicap and others there. And it basically sits, the restroom especially, sits out without any good crossing and access to people who are on the east side of the highway. And then, right there in the center, and the Caltrans noted that this is the one area that's on the east side that is red striped, it's been no parking for some time. But you get into a pinch area where you have the coastal trail, the damaged coastal trail, the proposed Class 2 bike lanes, and beyond that, the Caltrans right-of-way, which people have proposed, might be used for parking for a multimodal trail, and it's an awful concentrated effort there. But going on to the next slide, it's Sam's Charterhouse. This shows the resolution potentially for Sam's losing parking on the highway. The Harbor District has purchased parking on either side of Highway 2 for their own purposes and when they have overflow seasons, but that area might be right an outlet for Sam's parking. I know there's been minor conversation about it, but that's a treatment for that area. In the next slide, looking now at Surfers Beach, you'll see that heavy traffic parking use of the east side especially, really from Coronado all the way up. And I did a small analysis here. The green area is what's referred to as a GSD dirt parking lot, and that can hold a number of cars. They also park on Abysspo Street itself, that's the blue rectangles. The Caltrans right-of-way, where cars can now freely drive off of Highway 1 and park there, is shown in the yellow. And then the red is an area between the parking all the way down to Coronado, which is probably the most popular way, place to park on the road on the east side. And again, on a heavy day, you see it continuing all the way north. So to look at what that results in, in terms of the Class 2 bicycle lane coming in, all of the shoulder there on the east side, really, and I counted about 47 cars in each of those two areas, as well as 30 in the Caltrans right-of-way, all of those were, would be destined to go away. So it's a large loss. And especially in the dirt parking lot area, that's been used really for 30 or 40 years for people who want to park there. So there's a fairly long history there that is not dealt with by just suddenly putting up a no parking sign. The Granada Community Services District in Abysspo, I'll get to them in the next slide. Though currently in the beach access, Caltrans and the community did do a series of studies in 2012 to look at that area, to see what could be done for both mobility and parking. This is what it looks like really today. So this is, just narrows in on the dirt parking lot and the parking alongside the east side all the way up to Coronado, and you can see the vegetated area as well. In 2012, the Safety and Mobility Studies looked at this in some detail and looked at the dirt lot and said either it could be used, improved as a parking area or restored to more into natural state. They proposed that a new parking area could be built just to the north of that, and then the diagonal parking might go in the area where you have the Caltrans right-of-way. And this is all well documented in a formal study, really funded by Caltrans, and published. When you look at where we got to today, first of all, connect the coast side, which is in today's term, the leading effort. I circulated some of the elements that were put into the coast side when it was released in 2022 for this area. They referred to a parking study. I want to highlight every, everything that was, or point your attention to the comment made by Caltrans about the parking study, and what they explicitly said is, parking studies could be done, and they could be funded, and you could use it to fund trails and other things with support from Caltrans, and noted that the county did not do that. So although it's highlighted in '22, it hasn't been done, and it might fund some of the other things I'll mention. You have also improved new highway crossings that were proposed in '22. You can see one at Surfers Beach and one up near Sam's Charterhouse. Neither of those was approved in the multi-asset proposal. You see a separated multimodal trail going along the Caltrans right-of-way, as well as a parking study symbol there. Again, nothing has been done by the county. A year ago, I stood with Caltrans and county representatives at the Surfers Beach and the Armoring, looking both at the damage that was occurred at the coastal trail and pointing across the road to the area where you might have a multimodal trail or, and/or you could input parking. And nothing has been done by those agencies. I think Caltrans believes it's the county's responsibility to take initiative, but in any event, although it was mentioned and noted, nothing has happened yet. I've given here an overlay of the proposed community center and park for this area. This is an overlay on the previous map. And basically, you can see that in contrast to what was offered in the Safety and Mobility Studies, the plan is to have a brand-new parking lot where one was proposed and to convert the dirt parking lot to a riparian area. That's really where the dirt parking lot is today, and that's where people have parked for decades to get across the road. Again, you can see the Caltrans right-of-way, it's really quite extensive and could probably handle a multimodal trail or parking, but it's a definitely, it's not just drive off the highway and do it with Class 2 bike lanes and the improvements coming in for the highway, it would have to be a formal project. In talking with GCSD about using the parking lot even for an access road, there was concern about it. So really, those sides aren't talking. Now, the interesting thing about that project is it's due to come forward for its own coastal development permit, but it's likely not to get to the county until May. And in this letter here from the GCSD Board President, you can see that they really look at the parking area they're building for their own use and note that they would hope that Caltrans or Caltrans and the county could do something to accommodate for the lost street parking. So just to highlight that as a concern. So those are the particular areas. In response to the earlier speaker's question about the Coastal Commission, I met with Catherine Slater-Carter and myself with the Coastal Commission this morning to talk about this. We went with an earlier version of these slides to make them aware of these issues, and certainly they had comment, but there's no way that they could come with any comments today. But that's really, so, you know, that comes with the result of a formal appeal to the Coastal Commission. What you're looking at today here for Half Moon Bay is, if you look at how the maps are really drawn and impact on the roadway, all of that serious decision-making or opportunities for action rests with the county. I think the areas within Half Moon Bay itself and the city, you know, you could talk yourself about how they were dealt with, but I don't, you know, I don't expect that they rise to the level of concern that we have in the unincorporated midcoast, which I've tried to document here. I'm sharing this slide with Caltrans tomorrow, and I'll also bring it to the Midcoast Council tomorrow as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Len.
Okay, next we have Carlene Fodenauer.
Thank you for this opportunity to the Planning Commission, and thank you for the staff of Half Moon Bay and Caltrans representatives for being here and for allowing me to comment on this project, potential project. I'm the SaferSto School Coordinator for Cabrillo Unified School District and the other coastside school districts. Of course, I'd like to say that I am very excited about many aspects of this project, specifically the proposed crosswalks and stop lines at all the streets along the Naomi Patriots Trail. That'll be an awesome safety enhancement for students walking or biking to school. I also appreciate the efforts that Caltrans has made to add some safety elements in their plan for Kelly Avenue and Highway 1, such as the school crossing signage. As you know, this is very close to Cunha Intermediate School, Hatch Elementary School. Our district office is literally right there, and Pillar Cetus High School as well. This is a heavily-used intersection by students and others. And I've been doing this for, I don't know, 12 years now, and I've been hearing parent comments every single year about this intersection that they do not feel safe. And I myself, of course, use that intersection often, and I don't feel safe. In 2013, we did a Safe Roots to School Walk Audit with Farron Peers, and it was documented. The concerns at Kelly and Highway 1 were documented, and one of the main recommendations was to remove that right turn lane and the Porkchop Island. We've been waiting for this for a long time, and I'm concerned if it's not included in this project, when will it ever happen? We're talking about a lot of kids crossing here every single weekday. The other thing I wanted to mention was the high-visibility crosswalk need on the north side of Highway 1 and Poplar. We've had, you know, a lot of concerns about people coming from, they have to cross over Highway 1, so they have to literally cross twice. They have to cross Poplar twice in order to get over to Hatch Elementary School through the backside, where many families, you know, use that backside entrance. It's a really simple solution, put a northside crosswalk there. And then the last thing that I really want to highlight is there's so many people, and I'm specifically speaking about students, who are using that one block, the shoulder on Highway 1 between 92 and Kelly Avenue, because there's nowhere to go on the west side of the highway. So they're walking on the shoulder of the highway, you know, to get to school or to get home. I am, I am concerned that if we do the bike path through there, then that eliminates even that space that they're using to walk, and where are they going to go from there? I myself have tried to, you know, walk from school to school, and the only way is to walk on the shoulder. So I would think there could be a way to make a pathway there or a sidewalk, so that people using that heavily-used area could have a safe way to get through. And that, I'm just going to limit my comments to those three priorities: Kelly Avenue and Highway 1, the north side of Highway 1 and Poplar intersection crosswalk, and then adding a path or sidewalk along the west side of Highway 1 between 92 and Kelly Avenue. Thank you so much.
Okay, that's all I see.
Thank you. I think we will close public comment. And do any of my fellow commissioners have questions? Clarifying questions?
Our land use plan requires that lighting take into account habitat impacts, and is there a reason why we have to have this Cobra-style lighting? Can we use an alternative lighting that is not so disruptive and is consistent with our LUP, maybe not so our LUP, maybe not so tall, maybe is a more limited height, more facing downward? Sure. Start with the easy ones.
So in regard to the lighting and its potential, I think there's two parts to that question. One is the impacts, is that correct?
Yeah, so under our land-use plan, we have sensitive habitat, and you're putting new lighting in where it doesn't exist. And so the question is, is it feasible to put in alternative lighting that's not so disruptive to habitat?
Okay, so I think that we'll look at, we looked at the photometric analysis at both locations. I believe, although we'll need to confirm that both those locations have an existing luminaire, but I'll have to double-check, I'm going off memory here, but we did look at the photometric analysis of both in respect to what are the existing habitat conditions there for protected species, riparian, et cetera. The Caltrans biologists take a look, and there's a determination that would not affect special status species in regard to how far that footprint goes. This, it looks like you have a follow-up there.
Well, the general theme is we're trying to get away from light pollution in Half Moon Bay, and it's more of a dark skies policy in general.
I see.
And so we have an opportunity here when you're replacing the light. I mean, there's habitat specifically, but there's also just a general policy within our LUP about we want to promote dark skies wherever possible. And when we do new housing, we've got new standards where light has to be downward-facing, not so bright, et cetera. So is there an alternative lighting arrangement that could be put in place that satisfies your safety concerns but also addresses our dark skies policy?
Okay, yeah, thank you for clarifying. My, I do a lot of bio work, so my head goes there first, right? In regard to what type and luminaire and what would be installed there, I think we could work with the city, but I kind of have to defer to the project manager here, but she's nodding her head. So I think that Caltrans would be willing to work with the city to find a luminaire type that would work with the city if there are other luminaire that you have placed along the state route that you'd like us to take a look at. We'd be happy to take a look at them and put them into the design. If you want Maz, the city engineer, to review that in the plan sheet, we'd be happy to have his review and work with him to determine what kind of lighting you want to see there. So, yeah, I think that's totally possible.
Great, thank you. Is there any opposition to the concept of pre- and post-measurement for water movement in culverts?
So I think the request there was for monitoring, is that right?
Correct.
So to document existing conditions post-construction and then, I don't know what happens after that. I don't know that there's an opposition to that, but I'd have to look to Caltrans to see. It's not typical to be done for a culvert. You know, this isn't really a, there's not a lot of geomorphology happening at this location. It's not a creek, it's not a river, it's not a channel.
But it's happening downstream, and we've issued three emergency permits to the west of the project site where we've had to, like, do emergency repair work. So the concern is, does Caltrans have any opposition to it because of existing conditions? Our concern is that, my concern is that we're going to potentially create more damage or create more issues. And I thank you, by the way, today's presentation was so much better, so much clearer on what's happening there. I understand the importance of replacing the culvert, and the analysis was very thoughtful. I just, we've had a lot of unintended consequences with projects over the years, and they've had significant impacts to the west of Highway One from Miramonte's Road all the way up to the northern boundary of the city. So there's a lot of issues happening, and we've had people here with pitchforks and torches because their homes are being flooded.
Understood, understood. Okay, I think I have to hand this one off to Kelly then.
Thank you for your question. And so we discussed, you know, the flow would not increase due to the culvert replacement that would be replaced in kind. You know, we did a watershed analysis, we looked at how much water goes into each of these culverts and then what flows out as well. And, you know, it is, you have to look upstream as well as downstream. If it's, if there's sedimentation within the culvert, it could cause potential flooding upstream as well. We don't want that. Our design is based off full capacity of the culvert, a clean culvert, and that's why we have our maintenance crews come in and clean it yearly as well. But downstream as well, we have to work within our Caltrans right-of-way and then work with our partners downstream, upstream to address the issues that you're talking about. So it would be a partnership effort.
Okay, I'm going to pause on my questions right now, and I'm going to turn it over to my other commissioners.
This is, I have other questions, but this is in follow-up to your questions, Commissioner Hernandez. Into the mic, we can't hear you. Okay. In, you mentioned the culverts. When was the last time Caltrans cleaned those culverts? Because they seem to have been impacted the last three years, and they seem to have been, like, at 75% capacity the entire time, is filled with sedimentation. So the concern is, is once you clean out those, you know, when you rehabilitate those or when you replace those in kind, now you have clean culverts, right? So you have a lot more flow that's able to come through. What effect does that have downstream of that, meaning the neighborhoods to the west and then things exiting at Seymour and the Myrtle Avenue? And that's the concern here, because things keep flowing, and I don't know if that has been evaluated. So what was the schedule of maintenance? How do we, how do we put that in check with what we now will anticipate once these, the capacity is put back into its full operating capacity?
Understood. And then one, you know, before, these culverts were clean, you know, they were operating in their full capacity. And our maintenance crews do come and try to clean all the culverts within Highway One. There are a lot of culverts along Highway One, and it is a small crew, but they are trying to clean it on a yearly basis. And also, you know, recently, we've had some very large storms within the whole area. We've experienced that, and, you know, we are trying to resolve any flooding issues that may occur. We do take a look at that, and our goal is not to increase the flow. Our goal is to clean the culvert to the conditions that we had designed for that would not cause flooding. And so that's...
And perfectly understood. It's just that, and it is perhaps because we've had higher levels of intensity in rains that have caused the deterioration downstream and, you know, our ditches being eroded and our cliffs being eroded much faster. I just didn't know if there was any correlation or studies or anything or data points that you can, that you looked at pre, let's say, 2020 to now to see what those flows looked at at that point in time versus now, just to, you know, get our community feeling comfortable with, you know, what has been happening the last year since 2020.
Yeah.
If there's data points, that would be helpful to be able to double-check ourselves.
Yeah, some numbers or calc's or something like that. I think we do have our hydraulics team on the line as well, and I wonder if they could unmute and help, because they did do a culvert inspection report, and we were shown those images, and they weren't, you know, full of debris and everything. They do try to clean it yearly, so maybe the hydraulics group has some additional information.
And just to hit the key point here, the question was, one, when's the last time it was cleaned? You've provided evidence to us that shows the interior of the culverts being 80% clear, but the exterior of the culverts being 80% blocked. And so trying to understand, how often do they get out there? If they're getting out there every year and actually cleaning the culverts, okay, that's an example. If they haven't been there in three years and we've had significant changes to the water patterns, we might need to do some kind of mitigation. I think that's the nature of what we're trying to get here. We're trying to get to common ground with you guys.
So I'll first hand it off to hydraulics, see if they have any background information.
So this is Kai, again. We did do our study for the watershed coming down to the culverts, and because there's no change in the watershed, it's the same amount of flow pre- and post that we're looking at. We designed to a, what we call a 10% annual chance storm. I'm not sure if there's, and that was the design, that has been the design standard since this highway has been built. So the culvert itself is designed to pass what is called a 10% annual chance storm. People call it a 10-year storm, and that's how we designed it for. I'm not sure if that's what you're looking for or you're actually looking for specific, like, whether we've gone out to measure the amount of flow going through those culverts. If that's the case, we actually don't do that. We designed to, we designed using the FHWA's Hack 22 standard, Hack 22 standards, and that's what we follow.
So we don't have complete resolution of that, but I think maybe Maz, you can tell us what you're coming up with, with your studies that you're doing with, you know, the storm water and how that's impacting and how cleaning these drains and upgrade and, you know, resetting these culverts to its, I'm calling it pre-disaster conditions, would affect the drainage going down through Seymour or through the neighborhoods west or, you know, through the Myrtle, you know, creek, I'm calling it a creek, but the drain.
Sure, happy to comment. I mean, so, yeah, the, I think there's definitely some, you know, considerations with the, you know, the intensity of storms that we've seen over the last couple of years. And some of the things that we're looking at on the city side is, yes, there's the design standards of the 10-year storm events, but given that the increase in climate change and some of the other things that we've been seeing, the city's taken, you know, additional measures to look at higher flow events, 100-year, 500-year events. That's something that we've done and, you know, in some areas, and we hope to continue that funding-dependent, but those are some things that we're looking at from another perspective. I, it's, it's tough to, I think I understand from a Caltrans perspective, I think it's hard for them to look at areas and storm, design storms beyond that. I think that's really a, you know, higher-level discussion as far as what we should be doing as far as designing for storm events and whether those 10-year forecasts from the previous years are still adequate or not. But it's, so there's definitely a point of clarification and conversation there. It's just, right now, I know that standards aren't quite there yet, so a lot of folks are still using the older hydraulic standards. And, yeah, I would say that, you know, with the blockages of culverts, as they do get cleared, obviously, with sedimentation and buildup, water will find other ways to navigate. And so with the cleanings of these culverts, you'll see the hydrology go back to the more classic conditions, but, you know, obviously, those aren't things that we haven't seen in a number of years. So, you know, there could be other impacts downstream, and that's something that we'll have to consider as we start seeing some of those events unfold.
Okay, so I do see that there's, I mean, the project for Caltrans is basically rehabbing their surface areas, I mean, their pavement areas. I understand that. It was just something that I thought to ask, and, you know, we wanted to make sure that our deterioration of our coastal trail, then our cliffs, you know, our coastal beautiful cliffs don't get impacted anymore. And there is potential that it, because now these storm drains are going to be cleaned out and culverts are going to be cleaned out, there's potential of additional things happening downstream. I get that. This red curb that everybody has talked about along Highway One by Surfers Beach, when was that put in and who put that in?
You know, I don't have the exact timeline of when that was put in. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that.
I believe it was before my time. I want to say, I think it was done as part of, it might have been done as part of the staircase improvements, because that was the last time that there was a pretty significant improvement in that section of Highway One and Surfers Beach, which I believe was 2010, 2011, if I recall correctly.
Okay, and is that, was that something that Caltrans put in or the city put in?
That was something that Caltrans put in. It was a, there was a lot of, there was a lot of partnerships. I think the county was involved as well as the city to some capacity, and then the staircase was part of that build. I know that there's a separate project that Caltrans has funding for to replace the staircase, because I know it does not exist currently after the last storm events, but I believe that was part of that project. And I have to go back and look at the project history to see exactly what our role and responsibilities were, but I believe that Caltrans initiated that with support from city and county at that time.
And do people park in front of that red curb area right now?
I've personally seen it a couple of times on the edge, right as you get out of the RV park, although that area is marked pretty clearly and most of the times it is clear. But people do tend to put cars where they can find space.
I can affirm there were 12 cars parked there at 5 o'clock this afternoon from the RV park entrance to Coronado Road.
So why isn't somebody doing something about maybe deterring that activity? Because if it's a known, if a red curb means no parking, then why isn't something being done or has been done over the last few, many years?
Yeah, and I think that's also an issue that we're trying to resolve with this project as well. We will be refreshing the red curbs, and CHP can provide more input on the existing conditions, but those red curbs are there also for enforcement. And this project, since there is already red curb in that area, we aren't placing, like, the no-parking signs there at all. It's already red curb, and we'll just refresh that area. It is unsafe conditions, though. You know, even last Thursday, when we had our visual simulations where you saw, you know, the existing conditions and the proposed conditions, in our slide, we had someone go out there and take a live photo of that, and there were cars parked within, you know, the west side where that red curb was. And with that car park, it was physically parking there, and then a car had to go around that car and swerved into the northbound lane to go around that car that was trying to park within the red curb. So even with, like, our staff going out there on a Thursday afternoon, these unsafe conditions already, you know, you can see them happening. And I think, you know, anyone that drives that area, we see the conditions, the existing conditions, and what we try to do in this project is to enhance the safety within this area. And so that's what we're hoping to do. We understand that this area is changing a lot with the Granada Community Park. San Mateo County also has their study that Len was talking about. We have our project coming in. You know, we see this as an opportunity to change this area for the better, and this might be the first project that's going in, but we do want to enhance the area. It's not to remove the informal use of the current shoulder, it's to promote safety and also promote a multimodal Class II bike lane in both directions.
Can this whole project move forward without the improvements for bike trails from Capistrano Road to Coronado Road?
I think, you know, it's something that we've talked about, and I would like, you know, the commissioner's input on this as well. What we propose on the project is the Class II bike lane, and we do want to add that in. It is coastal access for bicyclists, and it also enhances pedestrian safety with deterring people from getting out of their car, using the informal shoulder, getting out of their cars and crossing live traffic from the west side.
We understand the many safety concerns, the many benefits. I'm simply asking the question of, can we move forward with the project today without adding the bike lane for this one stretch? I think someplace along the way, city staff made an optional proposal of that might be something we do. It just seems like we're trying to get a lot done here, and there's some open questions. My question is just simply a yes or no. Can we move forward with the project without putting the bike lanes in on that one narrow stretch where there's some open questions?
Yep, and I appreciate that question, because it is, you know, a question that we have. So... Um, so from the, with the, if it is a condition, you know, from the commissioners regarding that, um, we could remove the bike lane within that area, but it would not be continuous and it is not the most ideal condition for bicyclists in that area. And I just want to say, you know, the shoulder would be converting to a bike lane.
Understood.
I would like to ask a question about the new, about the bike lane being painted at Kelly Avenue in Highway One. It doesn't appear as though there is a buffer between the roadway and the bike lane. Can you speak to that?
We have a two foot buffer at the Kelly Avenue too. There is eight foot shorter at the existing condition. And we will, it will be six foot bike lane with a two foot buffer.
Um, yeah, I, I, the buffer I noticed was just a painted, uh, a white painted line, a dotted line. Maybe we could throw up the schematic, is that okay? And, and this is on the um, east side? We don't see it. Okay.
Can you advance one more slide?
We may not show the scale yet.
The intent is to have a two feet buffer.
I, I mean, because right now there's a pork chop in the middle of the road there and I, I walk this site all the time and there might be a six foot area that could accommodate a bike lane, but I didn't understand um, how you would have a buffer of two feet at that location. At the crossing. And then that's just one question. Um, and then I have a, it's a construction question, but that's at this site. I wanted to know as the road is being repaved, is the pork chop being removed and then being reinstalled?
Uh, there is a one pork chop, a couple pork chops was reconstructed recently. Uh, there is a couple of them is, is really low. Those one will be reconstructed.
So it's going to be removed and reinstalled?
Correct.
Okay. Go ahead. Kelly, you mentioned something about encroachment permits. Can you speak more to that?
Yeah, so an encroachment permit is any project that a city or a county or a private business or a developer or something can initiate. That's to utilize Caltrans right of way for any, any proposal that they may have. And so they do have to work with Caltrans because it is using Caltrans right of way. And we go through a process with them to make sure that everything is up to standard with Caltrans standards.
Were you referring to any one particular um, group or persons that would, might want to use, get an encroachment permit?
City and counties use it all the time within Caltrans right of way.
Okay, so this question, the clarifying question is probably for the city. Um, you know, our LUC, our policy 511, it talks about public beach parking inventory. And you know, it also says that um, the city, where feasible, would look at, you know, new beach parking areas. And I don't know what that means, new beach parking, new beach parking areas. Did the city consider the parking along Highway One as part of the inventory for beach parking? Ever?
I don't know if we actually have an inventory of parking along there. Um, I can say, I can't speak for the whole city, but for myself, when I was looking at this project again, I was under the impression from our maps that um, the city boundary ended at the west right of way. So I wasn't really looking at whether that was parking or not there. But uh, certainly, yeah, a, a parking inventory at some point would be appropriate for areas that get a lot of use, uh, people trying to get to the coastal trail or to the beaches.
So in this case, let's just say the city wants to continue using those, those areas as parking. Would the city need to get an encroachment permit from Caltrans?
Yeah, for the areas within Highway One, yes, that is correct. We would, we'd need to get an encroachment.
And what would that entail? And is there a cost? I mean, I, it just, it seems odd to me, this is just my personal perspective, that you would want to get parking along an area that both the city has said is unsafe in their um, LUP and now Caltrans is saying is unsafe. And so I, you know, but if the city chooses to want that and Caltrans is agreeing to give them, give it to them, then what makes this all unsafe? This is for Caltrans and the city. Because if it's unsafe, it's unsafe.
Let me take a stab at it and Caltrans can certainly respond. Um, yeah, I mean, for, for, for my, in my mind, if we're moving forward with an encroachment permit application to Caltrans, that's a capital project for us. That's a CIP project. And um, so that would require some level of design work, um, you know, and looking at some of these areas where we have these narrow shoulders and some other concerns, um, I, you know, we would be required to do more traffic analysis and, and take a closer look at traffic patterns and, and right of way delineation. So it's, yeah, it wouldn't be just a, a paper submittal with a rubber stamp. It's, it wouldn't require some review and, and design before we can actually move forward with something that's safe um, for use.
So now we're saying parking along there is not safe. I mean, it's, 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 I mean, so we're in this circle that we're saying things are not safe, yet we're saying we want parking. Caltrans is saying, yes, we might be able to give you an encroachment permit, but at the same time, we want safe streets with safe bicycle access. So it just seems very conflicting and I just wanted to de-conflict it for my brain in order to have this project moved through. Um, and I understand the whole concept about rerouting the bikes, bicyclists going down through the existing trail that's there, but that, that's in conflict with having massive pelotons driving through that area when there's pedestrians. So I don't know if that's the safest thing either, and I don't think pelotons are going to try and get, go that way. So safety is safety. I don't know how we compromise that.
And I think I want to clarify my um, discussion about encroachment permit. I'm saying that they could, cities, counties or developers can apply for an encroachment permit and say, use Caltrans right of way for like a parking lot or something like that. I'm not saying to use the shoulder as parking.
Thank you very much for that clarification. That makes sense.
Okay, thanks.
From the presentation, um, I heard that there was a proposal to add 0.03 acres of development in location one and two. Is there any concern with adding a condition that those are the only places where the road will be widened?
Yes, uh, those are only two locations within the city limits.
Within the city limits, I can't talk what's happening in the county, but there's no, you have no concern with us conditioning the project to say you can only widen in the areas where you've told us you're going to widen?
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Regarding those pork chops, I understand that, you know, there is no um, funding associated with trying to change that design that you have. Is that, is that correct? Is, is it a funding issue or is it just too late in the game to do this?
It's the type of project, it's a pavement rehabilitation where we restore the existing conditions. Um, and that's, it's a pavement rehab job and that's where the funding is coming from, uh, pavement rehab.
So going back to Commissioner Gossett's question about removing the um, pork chop and then re-establishing it again, um, it seems to me that that pork chop is a safety issue, right? Would we, would we be better off just eliminating it? I mean, why rebuild it? I, I don't understand that.
I mean, especially for the bike path because it's clearly in the way of the bike path. And it's been called out by, like, we've had this whole list of agencies and organizations that have been, you know, brought in for comment and feedback. One of them is the, um, the bicyclist group. And their primary comment and everything I've seen is, get rid of this pork chop. You're going to kill a bicyclist. You're going to kill a kid. You know, it's, it's wrong in so many different ways. You've got a new project for safety. You're already going to remove the pork chop. If you're going to rehab for safety, why can't you just eliminate it altogether? It just seems very logical to me.
From a safety perspective, absolutely. I think, well, the only thing I would say is that we'd also need to look at traffic operations and, because that would have, that, I can see the potential impacts on local streets and backup of traffic on Kelly. But um, from a safety perspective, I understand it's just um, something else to look and see if there's other modifications that would be necessary to reduce those types of issues as well.
I mean, isn't it logical that the other safety improvements you're making are going to impact traffic and circulation? I mean, you're, you're making quite a few changes here. I mean, so it's, it's, it's not, anyway.
So if it's, I understand this, the, the funding for the safety, but I'm sure there's some ways that this can be looked at to eliminate that, saying that it is a safety issue. You might have a cost saving somewhere, but I understand you have to put a new mast and, you know, I, I understand there's a cost, but you know, what we've also heard was that, you know, this project can be considered, this pork chop elimination can be considered in a different project down the line. But it just seems to me that we're spending money down the line for new mobilization costs, new demobilization costs, new studies, another time and effort to create, you know, another CDP. Um, and you'd have to get another environmental study going. I mean, is, is there some way you can, you know, make this project a little bit more comprehensible to include that and then do a cost analysis to say, okay, like, you know, we can do this. Maybe revisit the shop allocation or programming and to include, to include this elimination of the pork chop. I'm sure that there's something that, you know, Caltrans can do. And I understand you have a deadline to, to meet by the, the June deadline, but I also understand you can ask for an extension. And that, you know, because we have an opportunity here to wait for the, whatever happens at the Coastal Commission for the San Mateo County portion, there's some leeway here that perhaps we can talk about making some levels of adjustments to the funding or the design. You know, I, I don't know if there's an opportunity that Caltrans can look at perhaps and get the important things that we're looking for in this project, the pork chop, you know. I think the bicycle and the, the parking issue is going to resolve itself at the Coastal Commission anyway. I mean, what are the options here?
So, you know, I hope we all understand the other aspects that this project is also bringing to the community. I know we are focusing on like Kelly Ave and we are also, you know, tried to focus on this for this presentation as well. And so within our constraints that we do have with our funding, we are trying to, you know, introduce more safety aspects within the project, within our limits. And um, again, Ma's opened up additional traffic operations that we would have to do, you know, to remove that pork chop. And that is something that would take more time. And within the funding for the project, it isn't something that we would do on this particular project, but this is also, you know, the city did have an encroachment permit to work on the west side of this and remove the pork chops previously. And you know, we'd be more than happy to work with the city on the east side as well. That's another alternative to that.
That would mean the city uses its own funds, right? Um, how does that work?
They would go to the San Mateo County Transportation Authority, you know, propose, you know, these needs that are what was discussed at this meeting, um, the safety concerns, and then they could potentially get some money to fund that.
Yeah, but, but understood, but this money's coming from the state and the Fed, so we'd rather use that money, right? So I, I, you know, I, that's not for us here to discuss. It's just that some, it's something, I mean, the question that I'm having here is that we, we have something that's in the San Mateo County. That project is affecting our project, right? So what, what happens to our project if, if that is heard three months down the line, you know, at the Coastal Commission? Does, does the money go away because of that issue?
The, the funding for construction? You had mentioned a time extension.
Yes.
Uh, the time extension would have to go in front of California Transportation Commission with the proper justification of why we are asking for more time. The project is funded with a 20, fiscal year 23, 24 money that's available. And that has been agreed to, but we need a request for that funding. And if we don't request for that funding by June 2024, then there's the alternative of a time extension, but you have to put in the justification of, say, there's an appeal going on. But also if you're asking for additional scope to be added to the project, you know, CTC may not see that as justification for extending.
So has the, has Caltrans already started um, its process to ask for an extension? Because it doesn't seem realistic that the other project's going to come in on time, you know, be resolved on time. I, I, it's just questions that I'm having in my head before we proceed with our deliberations.
Yeah, understood. And then we also have to have a clear understanding of the next steps for this project too. And so that involves meeting with Coastal Commission for the San Mateo County portion, working with you guys on what the decision will be today. And um, and then that would be our clear understanding to request how many months we would request for that time extension. So we don't have the number of months right now, but we are working with, you know, San Mateo County Coastal Commission and City of Half Moon Bay to get that number.
So hypothetically, I'll, I'll give you the three scenarios we have. We can either continue it, this, this process. We can approve it, the CDP, or we can deny it. So in all these scenarios.
And approve with conditions.
And approve the, and, and a fourth one, right? And approve with conditions. But in all these scenarios, it's possibility that there is delays because somebody could appeal our decision. If it's, if we deny this possibility, the, the CDP, there's possibility that Caltrans can appeal it to our, our council. That's another timeframe. And then if we, let's see, we approve it without conditions, it can be, also be appealed. So there's, there are all these benchmarks and these scenarios that can create delays which would, all these scenarios can create delays. So it would seem to me that whichever way we go right now, Caltrans would have to go in with some kind of contingency plan to the CTC, the California Transportation Commission to say, hey, look, there is all these moving parts and we don't know where it's going to land. Can we have an extension? And in the meantime, you know, while we have this extension going on, I'm sure there's monies in the shop program that can be allocated towards this. Because I think there's, there's certain amount of money that's allocated in the funding sources that you, that I think Caltrans can exceed a certain, can go beyond what is provided in this, I think it's the STIP money. So I, and these are things that I'm just asking because based on my knowledge, there's funding there. It's not going to be dead because it can be, it's lapsed, but it can be resurrected, I think. And, and it just takes Caltrans. And it just takes Caltrans a little bit of effort to go through its process. And I realize Caltrans is doing a great job. Honestly, I had the opportunity today to speak with the CTC and with Juan from your office. You guys have been fantastic. The CTC, John Prey at the CTC, and Juan spent a lot of time talking to me and helped me understand what I need to think about as I'm going through the process today. And it just seems to me that there is opportunities in, for us to be very successful in getting what we want, not to be afraid about losing the money, and making sure that we have a tight project here, even with this pending Coastal Commission-San Mateo project. So there's risk in this because it can be appealed at any level. And that, there's that, still that unknown out there. So I'm a little hesitant to, like, tie myself into something when I don't have all these answers in my head.
Thank you.
Actually, I just had, and maybe we could take a break after this, but, and this is maybe a question that requires folks to huddle during a break. So I heard an option proposed that Caltrans could grant an easement to one, two, or three areas. One area is Kelly, where the city could take on projects to remove the pork chop, make other safety improvements, potentially grant an easement for the Caltrans right-of-way for Poplar Street and Highway 1, which has been, I've personally been a nag on that for 12 years and have seen very little progress. And potentially on this strip, you know, the Cabrillo Unified School District, Carleen, made the point that there are three major deficiencies for school-aged children today. One is at Poplar, one is at Kelly, and one is at this weird stretch of 92 to the Pillar Cidos Bridge on Highway 1, where there's no sidewalk and you're putting in a bicycle path, which is going to push the existing pedestrian, it's not safe, but existing pedestrian usage into a ditch where you fall off into a hill because bikes are coming. So is this something where Caltrans could grant an easement tonight? Or would the city be willing to do this? I mean, I'm just trying to figure out...
Well, I have a question. Can we, as a commission, put in conditions of approval to make this project better, to prevent all the appeals that might be coming down the pike? I mean, if we don't improve things tonight, someone who's watching this meeting might appeal it to the city council, like, why didn't we take care of Kelly Avenue? How come we're not adding a sidewalk on 92, you know, Highway 1 between 92 and Kelly Avenue? Why aren't we dealing with the crosswalk at Poplar when we know that a sidewalk's going to be added on the north side? They want a lot of things to improve the safety for the Safe Routes to School program. So why don't we just get it right so that it doesn't need to be appealed? Otherwise, you guys are going to be delayed for a year. I don't know how long it's going to take the California Coastal Commission to resolve the parking issue. So it's better to get it right than, and if we have to extend it, I'm happy to extend it. I don't know if our city staff likes that, that we would extend this, but I think there's an opportunity here. And we do need a five-minute break. Okay, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. You mean extended, continue our meeting?
Yes, but not, I mean, we could decide that. I'm just saying that's an option for us to, you know...
Yeah, maybe that's an opportunity for you guys to huddle, because I think we're going to deliberate a little bit, but maybe you can consider some of the questions we've raised and we can come back to them.
Yeah, and I think I want to add that, you know, there's no promises, even if we do add the scope, that CTC would approve this, would give us the funding for this. And ultimately, that would delay this project and its improvements along Highway 1. So that delays the construction of this roughly like two, it could be two to four or more years. You know, CTC has to find the money. They have that 10-year forecast where they would have to remove a project to incorporate this project. The funding has to be available, but also CTC has to approve that as well.
So if, so there's no way that this project can go through, our portion can go through without this, the approval from the Coastal Commission for the, oh, the resolution for the Coastal Commission for the San Mateo portion? Can we bifurcate this project from them? No. Okay. So that's the other thing. It's like, if we approve it, so what's the point at this point? You know, it, I'm just trying to logically talk this through to myself. It's, so we approve it, then what? You know?
Maybe we can deliberate on that.
Okay, so we are going to take a five-minute break. We'll be back at, say, 9:45.
And Bridget, I think you might want to take attendance. No? Okay, all right. Okay. So, would you like to present again, Ms. Ma?
If I may.
Oh, go ahead Doug.
I think Caltrans is going to add a couple more things to the Kelly Avenue intersection. After that, I think I want to, just as staff, go through some of the conditions. I think Rick already raised the one about agreeing that they would only widen the road in those identified ones. I think we could draft one for the culvert replacement, something about monitoring, reporting for... So I'll get into that, but I'll let them present the Kelly stuff first.
Okay. So, you know, we understand the concerns at Kelly Avenue. And during our huddle, you know, we talked about how we can improve this area even more. So, we have discussed the potential of adding the accessible pedestrian push buttons. And this would be on the north-east two sidewalks. And then I will let San kind of go into more details about the design of that and what it would look like. But that is a solution we could propose within the Kelly Ave.
Yeah, we heard that city has a concern crossing from the pork chop to the existing curb ramp on the southeast and northeast end. So what we're proposing is putting up accessible pedestrian signal button, push button, on both sides so that people can cross with the green lights on it. So that's our approach. I mean, that's the one thing we can add for more safety at the Kelly Avenue. So that will coincide with the school crossing signs. Probably you can move to the... yeah. So if you look at it, we can probably add APS push buttons at those four new school crossing signs where they are.
By north, I'm confused. So, the stuff on the left side, this is the south side of the street.
Correct.
And you're proposing putting crosswalk buttons, you said on the northeast, so...
Northeast and the southeast.
Northeast, so by the gas station.
Correct.
And southeast by the Scooby House on the corner there, okay.
And then crossing, yeah, the free ride.
But you'd keep the pork chop?
Yeah, I mean, that has been brought up during P A E D and even our design phase. We discussed with the... we brought it up to the Caltrans Traffic Safety and Traffic Highway Ops. And they, we did, they look at the cross instant data and they did not recommend it. Any moving pork chops on this project because this project is not scoped to do that.
Well, I'd invite those people to walk that 100 times in two days during traffic and maybe they'd have a different opinion.
I have a question. Is it because it's not in the scope as the scope was presented to the C T C?
The funding of the project, not the scope.
Okay, so the funding of the project is based on a scope. You had to go to the C T C to ask for a certain amount of funding based on a scope, correct? So in the original scope, the funding matched the scope?
So projects are programmed and there's a specific amount of, I guess, funding for the pavement rehab. So pavement, there are programs within shop projects. So there are safety projects, there are pavement projects, there are bridge projects. And so that is how the funding is categorized and that's how the funding is distributed. So it's already a pavement rehab project and then the scope is established.
So let's hypothetically think, okay, we have this funding for a certain type of project, safety project or pavement project, right? And the state has routes across the state. The state has to do some level of assessment to see which highways need the rehab. So you have to have a scope, correct, to figure out the limits of the project, to figure out what is necessary for that design of the project. That's a scope, right? So that scope is matched up with the billions of dollars that C T C has. And you say, for this stretch of highway across these two jurisdictions, this is what we need. This is our scope for this amount of money. And then C T C goes in and says, oh, okay, we have this money associated with your scope. So there's two different scopes. One is what the C T C does for the shop within the programs. Another one is how you define, meaning Caltrans, of course, defines the project scope and the money associated with that scope, which then is allocated by the C T C.
So maybe I want to correct myself and step a little back. We have program advisors within Caltrans. And those program advisors, their job is to identify a project and a scope. And then they go to see what's available. And then they take a look at our, the planned projects within our 10-year shop. And then, so they have a four-year shop within where they adopt projects. And then those are programmed. But what this project is trying to do, this project is already programmed and it has been initiated and it's in the four-year shop from 2020. And this project is going to request an alloc... a request for allocation from C T C. And then that's saying that we completed the project, we have all the permits, and we would like to go to construction. And that's the request we would put in for this project.
Thank you, that was a great clarification and that's what I understood. I also understand in speaking with C T C and Dwan that there's also opportunities to ask for, number one, an extension. Number two, why you ask for an extension, you have to be able to justify why it's necessary. And clearly, there's going to be justification. You just have to make sure it's properly documented. But then there's also opportunities to say that, you know, in speaking with the community, there are certain things that they noted as a priority for safety that we feel we can add and we need to add because it is a high safety concern for that community. And Caltrans can work with the city staff to come up with that justification to present to C T C. The worst they can say is no.
I mean, if you want to go to worst-case scenario, they could say no. But there could be no project at all within highway one, within San Mateo County and City Half Moon Bay. So I don't want it to get there.
Right, right. I'm just trying to see how this can, how perhaps we can work this project with the safety issues resolved within one C D P, one time, one advertisement, and it doesn't have to come back to this commission again. Because it could be a different commission, which will have a whole bunch of different things. I mean, this pork chop thing has been around for 20 years apparently. And it looks like it's going to be another 10, 20 years, maybe. Who knows? It's because this shop program is a 10-year book or something to like to that effect. It's like it's never going to get done. I mean, and then to use city funds and to, well, to city to request the funds, which there's going to be a match associated with it. It's kind of, again, it's not a planning commission issue, it's a city council issue. But it just seems so counterintuitive to me. And I'm not, believe me, I really appreciate the time Caltrans has spent on this. I understand the predicament you're in. But I also think that there's opportunities and it's not a zero sum, right? There's opportunities here that can be asked for. I feel that the state really wants their highway system to be rehabbed. And I think we all want that to be rehabbed in our area. I don't think that the state is ever going to say, oh, forget, this funding's never going to happen. I think this Caltrans has a due diligence and they will make this happen because I think you guys are all invested in making all the state highway systems safe.
Yeah, and this project team has worked on it for five-plus years. We want to see it go through. But, you know, with what you're saying with this added scope, there is more that comes with it as well. There is the traffic operations study, there's safety studies, and then design as well. And then that's additional, what we call support costs, which is our, you know, the support to deliver that project. That also is, you know, very little now because we're at the end of the project. And what we would, you know, when we request the C T C for additional funding, they're going to say, you know, it doesn't seem like you or the community stakeholders have an actual decision or a plan moving forward and you're adding scope now. So they may not approve the time extension. They may say, come back to us in four or five years and once you have some type of plan.
I have a question for Doug. Can we put in the conditions that we want this pork chop as part of the safety conditions and tie it to this policy? The, I guess it would be a policy for our safety. Or we have a half moon bay circulation element, we have a safety element, and we have a coastside emergency operations plan. We might, I don't know if we have jurisdiction over the coastside emergency operations.
I mean, the connect the coast community has commented on the pork chop. Cabrillo Unified School District has taken a position on the pork chop. The Coastside Bikes has taken a position on the pork chop. As a citizen, I have taken a position on the pork chop. Like, it's, and there've, I mean, Ma's, correct me if I'm wrong, but there've been, I think, three accidents over the last five years at Kelly? Pedestrian bike accidents with automobiles?
Yes, I believe so, based on our, the traffic records we had seen for other grant applications we've done.
Okay.
And at the school district, they've, they're expanding their TK program and they have a preschool program. So it's not just an elementary school. We've got young little people crossing the highway both ways twice a day. And so in addition to the elementary students and the middle school and high school. So there's just a lot going on right next to this highway that really needs to be addressed from a safety standpoint.
Well, to get back to the original question about can we write a condition of approval for that? And I think city attorney may want to weigh in after I dig myself in a hole here. Planning Commission has pretty broad discretion to, you know, impose conditions on projects. There are some basic requirements that they're feasible and enforceable. And how, whether, once this gets into, you know, the Caltrans organization, if it meets those standards or not is hard to say. They could say, look, we go to their boss, say, we got an approval, but we have to do this. Is there some way to do it? And they might say, yeah, they might say, no. They could decide to appeal that approval and go to the city council and say, this condition is, for our purposes, it's just not feasible. We can't do that. So I don't know, it's not a totally satisfactory answer. And I think I do want to clarify, I had raised this question a few times, what they're coming around to on the pedestrian signal buttons and stuff there that, you know, right now, you have to cross that right turn lane to get to the pork chop, to push the pedestrian button, and then you have to stand there. That at least if you could push the button on the main curb and they would potentially be able to add, maybe, this part I'm not sure about, but maybe like when that button gets pushed for the right turn lane, maybe, maybe there would be, you know, no right turn on red until that gets done. So that would, it would certainly improve conditions. It's not the answer everybody wants, but it would be a condition that's probably feasible and enforceable. I don't know if Winter wants to weigh in on that.
Just to clarify, it's been a minute. The button is currently on the pork chop.
Yep.
So the proposal would be to remove it from the pork chop or just leave it on the pork chop, but add another one.
You'd have a second one.
Yes. And then similarly, by the gas station, add a second one over there because there isn't one today.
Yep.
Okay.
So, again, I think that is an incremental improvement that would be feasible and enforceable. Going beyond that, I think is a gray area.
Thanks Doug. The only thing I would add, and I think Commissioner Joanna's referred to this already, is that for conditions of approval, you would want to really tie it to the findings that you need to make for issuing the C D P. And so that would be, you know, consistency findings with the L C P. So I would recommend that if you're considering any conditions of approval, they be linked back to this condition is so that we can make the findings of consistency with this particular policy to issue the C D P.
I have a question about, you know, the, one of the things that the Cabrera School District pointed out was the pathway from, I guess, across the bridge going through. I think at one point, the thought was, and I think this happened years ago, when the bridge going across Pillar Cedar Creek from Safeway through Pillar Cedos, I think that was the solution to the kids and the folks taking their, you know, their shopping carts across the bridge. I think the thought was at that time when they built the trail.
The pedestrian bridge.
The pedestrian bridge, right. From Safeway, linking it to Pillar Cedos. That's the path that the students, and they still do do that. But I don't think everybody knows to do that. Perhaps signage can be put in that, in the area. Well, signage is another issue, but some kind of, some kind of, you know, education or something that will have kids that are coming in from different areas or pedestrians from different areas. Maybe having, it's a long way around, you know, and, but that's no different than having bicyclists go through the area from Coronado to Capistrano. I mean, it's, that bridge was supposed to be used as that pathway.
I would just add, I'm pretty sure that's outside of the right of way. So that would be a city responsibility to add.
That's that partnership, right? I mean, I'm just trying to say that if there's no room on that bridge to have a pedestrian walkway and if we're putting that in there, I don't know if that pedestrian walkway can support or if it's even a standard for Caltrans to put, you know, railings across that bridge so that kids, you know.
Maybe we could move it to our dialogue at this point.
Okay.
But you actually had some other findings you wanted to make before we do that. Some recommendations on conditions of approval.
Couple of things that we could talk now or when you get closer to a decision. But we did get some agreement on conditions of approval that would work for everybody. And these would be, I think, relevant sort of with whatever decision you come to. And these would be, I think, relevant, sort of with whatever decision you, you come to. So we did agree, that condition that Rick brought up about the two areas of pavement widening that are identifying the plans, those would be the only two areas. On the culvert monitoring, when they're replaced, I'm pretty confident staff can write a condition that would require monitoring for a fixed period of time, since there, there are maintenance crews out there anyway. And just look at, you know, where the, the outfall is in the pretty broad, grassy, right of way area, and is, is it working? Is there erosion? Is water pouring over into the streets? You know, do we need, I think with an enforcement mechanism that said they might have to improve the erosion control, or, you know, some kind of retention basin there, I think staff could write that between Maz and myself. What Rick brought up was about the street lighting, to work with staff on trying to reduce lighting effects. I think we could write a condition for that. If you want to go down the path of the bike diversion under the coastal trail and stuff, we could write a condition, but again, it gets a little complicated because part of that involves area that's in the county's permit, so we would have to put a little language in there. It's, you know, to be worked out with county and coastal commission, or something to that effect. That's, I think those are the conditions I identified that we probably need to include.
Okay.
Are you still going to suggest removing some of the bike lanes along Highway One between, in that area up by Surfers Beach?
I wouldn't put you on the spot. Maybe that's for us to-
No, I mean, but it was actually in our-
That's a potential condition of approval.
It was in our staff report as an option.
I left the staff recommendation pretty wide open, just because we still had to get through a lot of new information.
Okay.
I'm waiting to hear from coastal commission staff, I'm waiting to hear from county staff. But it seems like if we, if we leave those lanes in, we're definitely going to get appealed to the coastal commission. If we take them out for now, we might be able to avoid an appeal and just wait for the coastal commission to give guidance to the county, instead of going through an appeal to the city council, and then to the coastal commission, and having our appeals on different tracks. So I think I'm still leaning towards that. I think we do have to just sort of confirm that the coastal trail isn't going to, you know, fall into the ocean in the next year, that it is, you know, plausible. That's about the, I don't think we can answer that question for the coastal commission. I think they need to weigh in on, do you need to replace that parking on the shoulder? And that creates a whole new project, you know.
Is there anything else you would like to add before we go into deliberation?
No, I just want to thank you all, you know, for meeting us twice. And again, the project with support cost is $50 million investment into Highway One. We have a lot, a lot of different scope, which is why we call it a multi-asset roadway rehab project. And, you know, we're proud of the project. We come here and we want to, you know, spread awareness of the project, as well as, you know, let everyone know what our project will propose for Highway One within San Mateo and City of Half Moon Bay. And so, you know, thank you for listening to us, and I appreciate, you know, the conversation we had.
Thank you. Okay.
I, I just want to say thank you to Caltrans. This presentation today was fantastic, and I really appreciate all of you being here. This has been super helpful for me. Thank you. And similarly for city staff, a lot of work's gone into this. So Caltrans, so I'm comfortable with the condition of approval for monitoring, would love to see the push buttons added, the condition of approval to only widen where indicated, letting the city staff work on a plan to come up with street lighting that is consistent with our land use plan. I think that those are super helpful. Caltrans did not do a parking study, but we've received evidence today, photographic evidence, of existing conditions for parking. I did account from both the Caltrans presentation and from the presentation from Len Erickson. I counted, within the city's jurisdiction, 54 parking spots that are being used, or clearly could be a parking spot, like there's a gap, a car width wide, in the photographic evidence that's been presented to us today. Since no other data has been presented, I'm going to use my count of 54 as, there are 54 existing parking spots. Not including Sam's parking lot, the little overlap there where the cars park at a 90-degree angle. I counted 54. So to me, I can't imagine the coastal commission's going to approve a project that removes 54 existing parking spots. When I drove down the highway today, I kind of did a guess of, it's probably about 250 parking spots on both sides of the road. And I counted about 75 cars parked on both sides of the road. When I went up and down, 25 were in the city's jurisdiction. So that's just my observation, and this is on a Tuesday afternoon at 5 o'clock. So there's, I'm, I'm concerned that if we approve the bike lanes in this area, we're going to have an appeal. And I think maybe there's an, there's an opportunity, this is, getting bike lanes there, I just want to be really clear, I think this is really a great idea, I'm super supportive of it, I understand the benefit of it. I've even, you know, I was in a sprint triathlon right in that area, even when it was blocked off, it's not safe, you know, people are cutting you off. And, and so I understand the need to have dedicated bike lanes there. And I, I don't think we should try to approve a project where we're moving Class II bike traffic onto the coastal trail, the pelotons next to the pedestrians and the dog walkers is probably not a good mix. So I think this might need to be a stretch where we just say, no bike lanes for now, and wait till we come back and get more guidance from the coastal commission, and we don't have to get tied up in, you know, appeals. I think that's, I think that's the way I would tend to go with this, is just make a condition of approval, no bike lanes on the city's project from Capistrano Road to, dang it, I always forget the name of the, to Coronado. Yeah, so that would be my suggestion is, I, I don't want us to continue this. I think if, if, I would want us to make a decision tonight, and if Caltrans wants to appeal it, I think then they can appeal it to city council. I don't, I don't think it really benefits us to kick, to keep this going. I would like to get rid of the pork chop and make a condition of approval. And there's a specific, if I go into the five, LUP policy 525 on highway crossings, we need to work with Caltrans to ensure that improvements to Highway One and Highway 92 incorporate safe access for bicycles and pedestrians from all neighborhoods to the beach, downtown, and schools. Poplar is a major gateway, Kelly is a major gateway. We've had a number of accidents in the last five, three accidents in the last five years. My personal testimony at multiple meetings, and testimony from friends and neighbors, is Poplar is not safe. We've received testimony from Cabrillo Unified School District, and from the Coast Side Bikes community, that these intersections need to be addressed. So I would, I would definitely have a condition of approval that we remove the pork chops, that that seems to be the important issue. I honestly don't have an opinion on Poplar. I think the city's project right now to clean that up is going to address most of the issues because you're going to have a safe place to walk. But I, I don't know what you can do there. And I would love to see us figure out how to deal with this. I can't be consistent with 525 without removing the pork chop, I'll just be clear. I just don't see a way to, to approve this. I'm not as worried about Poplar. I think the city's project will address the safe crossings, and, you know, that, that will come later potentially. Yeah, that's the specific area, is, is, we've received testimony from the public that indicates this is not a safe intersection.
Thank you. Can you tell me, oh, 525?
Five dash 25. It's actually, I cheated, I went directly to the, the resolution.
Okay.
Looked at the conditions there.
Right, because I'm looking, I'm looking for it in, in the actual plan, and I'm finding a difficult time looking for policy 525. So highway crossings, it says here. Okay, yep, I see it. Actually, on page 523, thank you. So I have concern about the bicycle lanes and removing the parking, or not removing the parking. So can you tell me again what your proposal was for the bicycle and the parking?
I'm proposing we approve the project without bicycle lanes from Capistrano Road to Coronado. And then let, let, let's figure it out down, let's, we're going to, let's not kick the can on our approval tonight, but kick the can on the bike lanes on that stretch because it's already being contested.
But why not leave it in then? And then if it's contested, then we just remove it?
Well, I think the benefit is, we, the city doesn't have to deal with an appeal.
Well, this can get appealed anyway.
Yeah, but there's no, like, we're removing the condition of appeal. The condition of appeal would be the removal of parking, that's why you would go to the, because you're, you're eliminating coastal access.
So my, my concern is the safety part. So again, these are not considered legal spaces. What's a legal space? I don't know what the legal definition is of a legal space, if there is one. My understanding is that Caltrans has a standard for what a legal parking space is. It has a certain width, a certain length, and, and I don't know if your count of spaces amounts to how many spaces would be counted if they had a legal space. So that's a question I have. So, and, and the other part is, is that I can't sit here and say that that is a legal space, and that's a safe space. And so I wouldn't want to have that condition in there, but I agree with all the other conditions. Because all along, you know, that, that was my question again, did the city count this, these spaces as parking spaces, as access to the, to the beach access? And, and I don't have a clear answer on that. So to eliminate it is, to me, is an issue.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's, it's a fair point. I mean, the red curb, it's washed out, but you can see the red curb, but there's a red curb only for a portion of the area where there's 54 cars parked, right? Or 54 parking spots. There's only a small portion of it is, is, is a red curb, or what used to be a red curb. And we haven't received testimony on this, but I'm under the impression that there's been one fatality on the Surfers Beach area, and that was a drunk driver hitting somebody wandering out at Sam's in the last five years, right? There's no, I mean, maybe city staff has data on this, but I'm under the impression that the current conditions on Surfers Beach, while not ideal, the traffic goes so slow there, there's, there's actually very few serious accidents. But I, I haven't received testimony one way or the other.
Which, which then brings up the other issue that I'd asked Doug about yesterday, was that the emergency response time slowed down because of the parking that's there along that highway. And so that, to me, is a concern, because emergency response time for emergency vehicles.
I agree with you on the safety issue, yeah.
I personally, from a safety standpoint, and from the knowledge of, you know, trying to get a safe access for first responders, whether it be an earthquake, somebody, you know, going to the hospital, any of that trumps the fact that we need parking, that we don't even know whether the, the coastal commission's going to say, yea or nay to.
Yeah, but there's, it doesn't matter, because there's a bypass. There's a, there's a bypass right there, from Coronado to Capistrano, there's a bypass road, that you can just veer off to the east and, you know, and-
So that's, that's adding response time.
Well, I mean, sure, but it's, again, I'm not a fan of this, I'm just saying, we have an obligation to maximize coastal access, right? We certainly are not allowed to reduce existing coastal access. It was my, that's, that's my understanding of the Coastal Act and how it applies to us. And people have opinions who aren't on the coastal commission, we haven't gotten an opinion from the current coastal commission, but as a planning commissioner, like, we're, we can't just willy-nilly knock out 54 parking spots in our district without having a clear plan of how they're going to be replaced. And yes, we need to address the safety issues, but that particular choke point, that's one of the few choke points where you can move an ambulance, go to the east, and it takes about the same time. I mean, that's, that's the current condition. I mean, I know people have, people do that all the time, the locals will skip around and just, you know, bypass the traffic. I mean, we're not making the, the safety issue any worse than it already is, I guess.
I don't know if that's true or not, because I don't have data points to actually say that. And I don't know if the response time is the same, but at the same time, there's not supposed to be parking there. We all know that. The city has identified that this, the area there is not supposed to be parked. Yes, it's a historic parking, but I don't know the answer to this, and I don't want to second-guess what the coastal commission's going to say. I would rather leave that condition out and move with the remaining conditions, and if there is a problem that comes up, then Caltrans is going to have to come back, at least they'll have a project. Caltrans can come back to us and say, hey, you know what? The coastal commission said this, you guys need to follow suit. I, I mean, that, that's my logic, but, you know.
Can we condition the project pending coastal commission approval? Can we just say, yeah, we're, we're fine leaving these bike lanes in if the coastal commission doesn't consider it to be a taking of parking spots? I don't know. I mean, that, that seems kind of weird.
Well-
Seems murky.
It's murky. I think, a couple of considerations that I've thought about, that where, where they're proposing these bike lanes, it's already paved. If the coastal commission came back and said, the safety issues outweigh coastal access, for example, down the road, I think it, it could be a, you know, a minor amendment to the CDP to say, okay, go ahead and paint them there. Or, on the other hand, if they came back and said, well, we like the bike lanes, but you need to find some replacement parking, it could be when, we, we could write a condition that said, when there is replacement parking located, then, then the lanes could be painted. So there's, there's probably a way to do it, but it's definitely a little bit murky.
Do we have any accident data for Surfers Beach?
No, not at this time. I was looking at our, at our heat maps from previously, and it didn't identify quite a lot over there.
I mean, and when and if the, the coastal commission makes a decision, saying, okay, yes, we do need to make, we do need to have replacement parking, because really, I can't say whether they're going to request that or not. I have no idea. It's not, and I don't want to presume anything. Would Cal, would, can we condition then the, the, put, place a condition in there, saying that it has to meet the certain, you know, width of what a legal parking space is? Because now people are angle parking, some people are, you know, doing all kinds of creative parking scenarios there. I mean, because, because is there, how do you, what is a parking space? What is a legal parking space?
I, I would defer to- I, I would defer to Caltrans. I mean, in cities, we have standards, but we're not in the Caltrans right away.
And would Caltrans go out there and mark out all the spaces then? I mean, just to say, the Coastal Commission says, yeah, you have to keep that parking or find alternative, then if Caltrans says, okay, we're going to eliminate the bikes, bike lanes and let everybody park along that side, will they go in and put parking and then will spaces in there? I, I don't know.
I, I can't speak for Caltrans on what they would do in that scenario.
So I think the, it's an interesting question, right? Because we're going back to the safety issue of, you know, it's the trade-off is safety versus coastal access. And, you know, there's, it's, it's not, I haven't received evidence that it's unsafe. I haven't heard testimony from CHP or Fire District saying, oh, you need to make this safer for me. They certainly were one of the, to, to both of those agencies were, you know, highlighted in the document, but I haven't received any statements that, hey, this is important for us from a ambulance or first responder perspective. So, I mean, I agree with your point logically, but I haven't heard evidence that supports that position.
Winter?
Thank you. I have one very boring logistical note, which is we're after 10:30, so we might want to have a motion to extend the, the meeting.
I make a motion.
And then I, I could also comment, once you do that briefly, on the condition of approval question.
Okay.
Can I make an, I'd like to make a motion to extend the meeting to 11:15.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
All those not? Go ahead.
Thanks. The only other possible condition, which I don't know if you thought about this, Doug, would just be to, you know, approve with the bike lanes, provided that if the Coastal Commission requires some sort of replacement parking in the parallel San Mateo County appeal, that Caltrans come back and propose something, you know, similar for the, the city scope, something like that. I'm not sure if that would ward off an appeal, if that was the point of it, but it would at least make sure that we remain consistent with whatever the Coastal Commission decides. Of course, they may not actually find a substantial issue here, so it may be that there, there is no further proceedings, but that, that's one more idea.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
Any other, any other things you guys want to deliberate on?
I, I just wanted to say I like the conditions of approval that you recommended and so, and I, I like what Winter just recommended for the bike lane and parking issue. So with that, I'm, I'm fine with that. I am too.
So I just want to, I want to be clear, because I sometimes get happy ears. Oh, before we, before we go over, before we go over to them, I just want to clarify the pork chop. Are we agreeing to remove the pork chop as a condition of approval?
Yes.
Okay, all right, great.
Please, Ms., Ms. Ma?
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Ma?
Yeah, I also wanted to clarify that Kelly Ave, it sounds like the condition is to remove the pork chops. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And add the push buttons on both the east side, on the north and the south.
Okay, I think, you know, that, that is a, is a funding constraint for the project. And I just want to state that, you know, first and so that we can get ahead of this too, that, you know, this potentially could affect the project moving forward, the condition of the pork chop. You know, what we could do, you know, what we could do is we could meet with City of Half Moon Bay tomorrow to discuss potential funding opportunities to remove the pork chop in the future with SMCTA. That could be a potential opportunity as well. But, you know, to associate with this project, it, it could be like a stopping point for this project, yes.
I, I understand, but I think we have something that we have to comply with in our own, we are bound by making sure that policy 525 is something that we can approve.
If it jeopardizes the project, I strongly recommend you appeal to City Council, right? We're asked, like, I don't want to continue this. I want to give you the ability to push over to City Council as fast as possible if it really jeopardizes funding. And if you come back and you find a funding opportunity tomorrow, great. I'll be the first person to show up at a City Council meeting and say, hey, vote to, you know, support Caltrans on this. I'd be the first person to do that because it would be finding a way to solve the problem, right? And what I've experienced, you know, as a citizen in a big state with lots of projects that go on, and one of the, you know, biggest pieces of infrastructure is a few blocks from my house, is you feel the sense of powerlessness. You know, we have the city, city engineer, a former city engineer who 20 years ago provided testimony that this was an issue then, and nothing, the pork chop was an issue then and nothing's happened with it over 20 years, right? And so our community's asked us to take a position on this, and we, we agree with their, their position. And if you can find a way to find funding, we'll, we'll, you know, happy to support you guys appealing it to City Council.
And I think, you know, Caltrans is also supportive, you know, of if there is a project that does that. I'm just saying this project may not specifically be able to do that.
Understood, but I also feel that this is a great opportunity for Caltrans to go back to the CTC and say, one of the conditions that this commission has to be able to comply with is policy 525, and this is why they had to place this condition, and this is why we need more money to support this condition because this project is very important for the state highway system. It's, it's good in all ways. And, and yes, funding is always a problem, but there's also ways around to get it to happen. It just needs, it's, and I'm sorry, it's going to take additional efforts from Caltrans, but that's how we get projects done too, right? Because you guys do a great job in getting things done. It's, you know, it, it's just a little bit more work. Well, probably a lot more work, but it's more work. But the CTC might have some, some leverage, you, you might have some leverage now to go to the CTC and say, look, this is what the reality on the ground is.
And I just want to put it out there, you know, it may risk the funding as well. There's the opposite side, but I understand.
Yeah, and, and that is, again, the, what Commissioner Hernandez says is, is a City Council decision. We don't do the budgets here or, you know, we, that's not our purview. So our purview is making sure that we meet the, the land use plan.
We're, we're putting the decision back to you to either, you know, appeal it or find another way to solve the problem. But I, we, we want to make sure that this gets addressed. And we've heard the major stakeholders in our community provide evidence that this intersection is not safe. It's a major area of concern, and we want to see this at a minimum be addressed. But I think, I think we're, we, and we appreciate all the work that's gone into this. We just, we're representing, you know, the interests of our community. All right.
Yeah.
Anything else, Margaret?
No, I, I think our, you, okay.
Sure.
I'm a little unclear what the commission's position was on Winter's suggested. Was, was you wanted that as a condition?
Yes. So I can, I can go through and make a proposal. And if there's, and then we can open it up for discussion before we move forward, if that works.
That sounds great. Can we take one at a time, just if you can list them one at a time, we can either say, yeah, yes, this is what we want, and then move to the next one? Because once we list them all out, then we're, it's like a fuzzy.
Okay. So I will do my best. So the first condition of approval is to add the push buttons as described by Caltrans at the intersection of Kelly. The second condition of approval is to provide monitoring on the culverts before and after they are replaced. To have Caltrans only widen Highway One where they have indicated Location One and Location Two and the plans that we've received tonight. For two, so I'm, I'm seeing head nods as we go through this. For, we want to have street lighting that complies with our local coastal plan and our dark skies policy. We add a condition of approval to remove the pork chop.
Both pork chops?
Both pork chops at Kelly Avenue and Highway One. And then I, I would say, I have three other open issues, so three other conditions. We would propose a condition of approval to include the bike lanes from Capistrano Road to Coronado, provided the Coastal Committee, the winner rule or the winner proposal, which is, you know, consistent with the Coastal Commission's determination of the county's need to either mitigate parking or not. That would require us to take the position that this is a safety improvement versus a coastal access improvement. So I'm, I'm comfortable with that, and then the Coastal Commission can give us guidance whether or not, you know, what their, what their view on that is. The two other open items I have, which I don't know if we have consensus on, was to make an improvement from 92 to the section of Highway, the bridge over Pillar Cedos So provide some type of pedestrian access there.
I think what Caltrans was saying, that they didn't have enough space, they would have to widen the bridge there to provide a proper access for.
I, I don't know if we want to add it as a condition of approval. So I, I, my, my feedback to you is, Mike, was, do we want to deal with it tonight or do we want to punt?
The, the alternative would be having signage, the city enforced, that wouldn't be a condition, but we would expect the city to put this on their list to ensure that pedestrians use the, the pedestrian bridge from Safeway through Pillar Cedos and then walk around and.
Yeah, we can, we can look at signage and things like that, but if we're looking at a capital project, that's something that's going to require council approval.
But this is, this would, this is, the capital project's already been done. It's the, it's the bridge, right? And that was done many years ago, and then.
So you're just asking for additional signage and?
Oh, but signs, okay.
Is that what you're asking for?
Yeah, just directional for, for pedestrians can use either the, the, the trail that goes underneath the bridge or the, underneath the, the bridge, the Pillar Cedos and Highway One Bridge, or go, use the pedestrian bridge going around.
Or put a sidewalk on the berm.
Got it. I mean, signage, I think, is not a problem. If we're looking at anything more substantial, it'll have to go through our capital programming process.
So I, I'm going to say we're not going to add a condition of approval for the jog. And then do we want to do anything for Poplar? Add a condition of approval to add a crosswalk on the north side. Okay. Okay, so, so northeast push, so I would like to make a condition of approval for the item before us to approve the project, consistent with our local coastal plan, with the following conditions. We add push buttons to the intersection of Kelly and Highway One that are ADA accessible. We add conditions of approval to monitor the culverts. We, three, only widen Highway One and Location One and Location Two. That's been presented to us tonight. That city staff and Caltrans will work on a lighting plan that is consistent with our dark skies policy. We will remove the pork chops at High Kelly and Highway One. And we will approve the bike lanes from Capistrano to Coronado using the proposal that our city attorney has presented with us. And add a crosswalk at Poplar and on the north side of Poplar and Highway One.
I second.
Do you want to roll call? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those that are not, no? Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next item is the Director's Report.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Steve McHarris, interim Community Development Director. I just have two items, and it's regarding your upcoming next two meetings. Next meeting on April 23rd, we'll be bringing the 55 Kelly Seniors Affordable Housing Project, CDP. And then we will have a special meeting of the Planning Commission on April 30th, and that will be for, for approval of the Measure D allocations outside of downtown. We had 42 requests with 20, 21 of them are being recommended by staff for you at that meeting. And that concludes my report.
Forty-two?
Forty-two, and how many will be?
Twenty-one will be recommended.
Oh, forty-two, okay.
Yes, we had forty-two requests.
Okay, twenty-one.
I would just, I'll try to find the post on Nextdoor, but there was some feedback from a citizen who's been denied, I think, four or five times. I don't know if city staff is aware of that, but.
We are, and we've had, we've, we've been in contact with every, every requested, yes, denied or, or being recommended for approval.
Thank you. Are there any Planning Commissioner reports or communications?
In an hour and 11 minutes, I turn 51.
Oh, yay, happy birthday.
So with that, does anyone wish to make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion.
To adjourn.
Second.
Yes. We're unanimous.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Good evening. Good night.